Test, test.
Test. Test, test.
Not yet, it takes a second. These were on.
Test, 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 test.
Now they're good.
Test, test. Test. Test.
Good evening, everyone. Sorry for being a little bit tardy this evening. We had some last-minute things to take care of. I'll call this meeting to order, the regular city council meeting for July 15, 2025. And at this time, I invite everyone to please stand and join me as we say our pledge of allegiance. Madam Kirk, can you do the roll call, please?
Councilmember Brando Cruz is excused. Councilmember Melissa Lamatina?
Here.
Councilmember David Oro?
Here.
Vice Mayor Mark Joseph?
Here.
Mayor Pierre Washington?
Here. Thank you, Teresa. Mr. Ross, can you do the report on closed session confirmation and reportable actions, please?
Yes. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, members of the public, the council convened an open session at 5:01 to see if there were any comments on the items agendized for closed session consideration. After determining there were none, they adjourned to closed session to address them. I'll take them in order. There were only two matters considered under anticipated litigation, and with respect to those two matters, there is no reportable action under the common law attorney-client privilege in that provided by Government Code Section 54, 956.9D2. With respect to existing litigation, there is reportable action with respect to agenda items 2A through D. And that reportable action was direction to special counsel to formulate a communication to the city attorney and mayor of Vallejo to initiate discussions with respect to resolution of those four individual matters in a format approved by your council. There was no reportable action with respect to 2E under the common law attorney-client privilege and with respect to Government Code Section 54, 956.9D1, nor was there reportable action with respect to the liability claim of Orchard Partners, LLC, under the provisions of a common law attorney-client privilege as a claim as a prelude to litigation and the provisions of Government Code Section 54, 956.9D1. With respective matters relating to public employment, there is reportable action in the form of authorizing the retention of the firm, Coolantano, Highsmith &amp; Watley, as city attorney effective July 16, 2025, and also authorizing the approval of a waiver letter with respect to Coolantano, Hightower &amp; Watley with respect to the city of Vallejo, as they also represent the city of Vallejo. There was also authorization to retain the firm of Rasch &amp; Swars on specified litigation matters and administrative matters for a transition and continued representation, period. The actions by the council on all of those actions was for zero. If I may, on the retention of the new firm of city attorney, I'd like to express the view to you, Mayor, and this council, that has been a pleasure representing the city and an honor. And I would echo that timeframe for past mayors of the city council, Leon Garcia, council member Mariam Abudamos, and I would go back to the original members of the city council, including Tom Orlando, Joan Bennett. I would particularly like to recognize all of the members of the council, but Ben Anderson, I think, is a person that comes to mind most. I think I could say that the strength and vision of Ben Anderson are the kind of things on which the foundation of this city was laid, and it wouldn't be anything like it presently is without his influence. I would also like to acknowledge, having served Supervisor Valia Ramos while she was on the city council, and certainly members of the planning commission, Andrew Goff, Crystal Malari, Babat Muhammad, Eric Altman, and I would like to rec -- also would like to recognize Charlie Johnson, a deceased member of that commission. There are certainly many citizens that come to mind, but I think certainly Fran Lemos, Beth Marcus, I only wish her irascible husband was still alive. I think they are people that come to mind, as well as Brenda Knight. So, in that context, it's been a pleasure to serve and honor, and I'm glad that I had the opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. For those of you that don't know, Bill has been our only city attorney since the incorporation of our city. He's been steadfast, trusted advisor, who's guided and shaped our foundation of our government for the last 30-plus years, and also a friend. So, I just want to thank you for your time, sir, sir. Okay, I will move on. Tonight, we have one proclamation and one presentation. We will start with item number four, a proclamation for July 2025 as Parks and Recreation Month. Do we have a recipient for this proclamation?
We have several.
That's good.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have quite a few of our staff here this evening to accept the proclamation.
Okay, I'll read the proclamation, and after we -- I read the proclamation, then we'll take a photo and give you guys -- give you an opportunity to kind of give us some feedback as well, okay? So, reading, July 2025 as Park and Recreation Month. Whereas park and recreation programs are an integral part of the communities out throughout our country, and are virtually important to establishing and maintaining the quality of life in our communities, ensuring the health and of our citizens, and contribution to the economic and environmental well-being of our community and region. And whereas, the City of American Canyon Parks and Recreation Department enriches the lives of our community members through active participation in lifelong learning, health and wellness, community involvement, providing essential services, protector of natural resources and habitats, and recreational activities. And whereas, park and recreation provided or provides essential and life-saving skills through learn-to-swim programs, specialized life-saving certificates or certifications, and expert hands-on training for parks and recreation staff. And whereas, park and recreation fosters social cohesiveness in communities by celebrating diversity, providing space to come together peacefully, modeling compassion, promoting social equality, connecting social networks, and ensuring all people have access to the benefits. And whereas, parks and recreation strengthens the community identity by providing facilities and services that reflect and celebrate our community's character, heritage, culture, history, and landscape. And whereas, park and recreation sustains the steward -- sustained and steward our natural resources by protecting habitats and open space, connecting people to nature, and promoting the economic -- the ecological functions of parkland. And whereas, the collaboration with the California Parks and Recreation Society, a statewide public awareness campaign, and National Recreation and Park Association, a nationwide public awareness campaign, aims to inform citizens and recognize the importance of access to local parks, trails, open space, facilities, services, and programs for the health, wellness, development, inspiration, and safety of all. And now therefore, I, Pierre Washington, Mayor of the City of American Canyon, on behalf of the city council, do proclaim July 2025 as Park and Recreation Month, urging all residents to use and enjoy American Canyon's parks, trails, open space -- open spaces, facilities, and many recreation opportunities through our program and services. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Did you want to do a picture first, and then we can get into the presentation, or would you like me to get the presentation first?
Let's take the picture first.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. I'm excited to be here this evening to recognize and celebrate July as Parks and Recreation Month, a national celebration that highlights the essential role of parks, open space, community programs, bill -- community programs that build and create a strong, healthy, and connected community. With me tonight is Alana Benn, our Recreation Manager. I would not be able to do my job without her. She is an essential function to our team, as well as several members of our audience tonight. Out of 85 part-time staff, not everybody could be here naturally, because we are in the middle of summer, and we have quite a few programs still running, so we will try to recognize them as well throughout this presentation. This annual celebration is led by the National Recreation and Park Association, which is also referred to as NRPA. They have recognized the impacts of parks and recreation for the past 30 years. It serves as a reminder that parks and recreation is an essential city service. It is just as important as police, fire, water, and roads. This year's theme, Where You Belong, Build Together, Play Together, reminds us that parks are where community happens. In American Canyon, our parks, programs, and events are deeply rooted in the fabric of our city. They reflect our values, bring people together, and help build a community where everyone feels welcome and is proud to be part of. Before we play this video, I want to show you just how seriously our team takes it. Here's a quick little video that highlights that.
We are passionate and dedicated.
We are innovative.
We are champions of diversity, equity, and inclusion.
We are compassionate.
We are stewards and advocates.
We are leaders.
We are essential.
We are forever.
We are committed to you.
We are Parks and Recreation.
So, this summer, we took a fresh approach on our programs, our summer programs in particular, by listening to our community's feedback and following trends. We created some really unique opportunities for our youth, and we delivered. From our popular swim lesson program to our specialty camps like slime making, Nerf battle, gardening, hiking in Newell, and our always beloved basketball camps, we had something for everyone. And the fun is not over yet, so if you are still looking for a fun experience this summer, please visit www.americancanon.gov, and you can sign up for our programs, because we still have some spaces left. And again, none of this could be hap -- none of this would be possible without our amazing partners and dedicated staff. This summer, we're proud to without our amazing partners and dedicated staff. This summer, we're proud to partner with local businesses that enhance our summer camp experience. One of those key partners was with the Napa Valley Transportation Authority, who helped provide safe, reliable, and low-cost transportation around American Canyon and to help, and into Napa to help with our field trips. This partnership was a big win for us. It helped keep our program registration costs low by avoiding high transportation costs and allowed us to bring back our beloved field trips. That was one of the one things that our program participants really loved. Just to show you how much our campers are having fun learning to take public transportation, here's a cute little video.
The Parks and Recreation Team is proud to partner with NVTA, bringing sustainable transportation to our community and giving kids exciting opportunities like a trip to Roxilla and Napa. Together, we're making memories and a greener future.
We would also like to say thank you to the American Canyon 4-H and Marshall's Honeybee Farm, who also help bring meaningful, inclusive experiences to these programs. And of course, none of this could happen without our dedicated Parks and Recreation staff, the heart behind every program, the event, and the park experience. Our Parks and Recreation Team is made up of passionate, dedicated individuals who bring creativity, care, and purpose to everything that they do. From leading programs to planning events to supporting youth, seniors, and families with heart and excellence. They play a vital role in enhancing our community's quality of life by promoting physical and mental health, connecting residents to social services, and creating safe, inclusive spaces where people of all ages can thrive. We're especially proud to celebrate cultural diversity and champion equity, ensuring every member of our community feels seen, welcomed, and included in our programs and public spaces.
Hello from the Lollapalooza Quaddish Center. Happy Parks and Recreation Month!
Hi from Oakland, Ginn. Happy Parks and Recreation Month!
Hi from Lollapalooza Quaddish Center. Happy Parks and Recreation Month!
Happy Parks and Recreation Month from City Hall!
So like I mentioned, not our entire team could be here this evening because they are offering some of these exceptional programs as we speak. So we wanted to make sure that they felt included and were understanding that they are valued and appreciated for all the work that they do. In closing, I want to thank our incredible Parks and Recreation Team for their dedication, creativity, and care for all year long, not just in summer. And to our community, thank you for choosing us to be part of your everyday lives, your memories, and your moments. We're honored to serve you. Happy Parks and Recreation Month.
And it starts with the two leaders at the top there, Ali Akita and Alana. You guys are doing an amazing job for the city. I get a lot of compliments on a daily basis about the things that you guys are doing. So you guys are awesome and thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we will move on to our Friends of the Napa River and their presentation. Is that Barry? Okay. I see that, yeah.
Wait just a second.
Okay, okay.
Okay. Good evening, City Council. Thank you for this opportunity tonight. I'm Barry Christian from American Canyon. And for full disclosure, I think most of you know me from my appointed position on the city's OSATS Commission and also appointment to Napa Valley Transportation Authority's ATAC Committee, Active Transportation Committee, and my elected position to Napa Open Space District Board, representing District Five. So I just want to make sure I'm, tell you tonight, I'm wearing a separate hat. I'm representing Friends of the Napa River, and I'm the current treasurer. Friends of the Napa River is known as the community's voice for protection, restoration, responsible development, and celebration of the Napa River and its watershed through education and advocacy. Friends was established as a 501(c)(3) nonprofit in 1994, primarily for the purpose of solving the city of Napa's flooding problems. Friends advocated for a living river solution rather than a concrete ditch, and was successful in gaining support for a ballot measure which created a flood control district, which then championed a living river flood control project, which became a national model. I was not yet on Friends' board when that began, but I was invited to join around 2006, when I attended a board meeting, to learn more about their successful efforts to build public access trails along the Napa River in the city of Napa. So I was looking for advice on establishing similar public access trails in American Canyons. And since Friends didn't have anyone representing City of American Canyon, they graciously invited me to join their board. And I can tell you that Friends has been a great help with letters of support advocating for grants to establish public access to our wetlands trails initially, and for public support to establish an open space district, which helped, helped construct our wetlands trails, and continuing today advocating for grants for the Wetlands Ecology Center. So we're here tonight because Friends wants to present the City of American Canyon with a copy of the Napa Valley Historical Ecology Atlas, Exploring a Hidden Landscape of Transformation and Resilience, a product of the Napa Valley Historical Ecology Project, which was a collaboration between the San Francisco Estuary Institute and Friends of the Napa River. The primary author was Dr. Robin Grossinger, Ph.D., from the SF Estuary Institute, with contributions from others, including biologist Sherry Gardner, currently a Friends of the Napa River Advisory Board member. Friends hopes this atlas will be a helpful reference for any future efforts by City of American Canyon to protect, restore, develop responsibly, and celebrate the natural areas of the Napa River through American Canyon. And so now I'd like to introduce our current president of Friends of the Napa River and longtime board member, Francie Winon.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members.
Good evening.
And wonderful people that are sitting in the audience. It's been my honor to be part of Friends of the Napa River for twenty-five years. And the thing that I love about this is that the Army Corps of Engineers wanted to cement the Napa River because we'd had all these floods. And as you all probably know, the flood issues in Napa County are like a fulcrum with Napa creating the tight space. So it backs up the water, whereas in the Midwest or East Coast, they have two-week floods. We have five-hour floods, but they're very dangerous. Oh, sorry, sorry. And so the whole idea about the flood project was to open it up. And you guys and the rest of the county were instrumental in making that opening to allow the water to go out. So it makes common sense. And I'm so glad that we now are in a much better place. So Barry came to us, as he said, a little later in the project. He's been instrumental. Your, Barry Christian, is just tremendous. And he's helped us so much over the years. And, but this ecology atlas is so fascinating because there's a whole section about the southern part of the county that is related to your history. And even though this was written several years ago, it's still current. And we had, the libraries have copies, and they're still being printed. There's still more that you can access. But it's a, it's a treasure trove of information for our area. So thank you very much. And I just want to say, the thing that Friends of the Napa River is so excited about is what you guys have done for the, making the Ecology Center and with Janelle and the Parks Foundation, putting that together and making this incredible place for learning and visiting. And you are doing something that I don't think anybody else in the Bay Area has done. And I'm so proud of you guys. And we will support you any way we can going forward. Thank you so much, and thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you, Francine. And we also think that Barry's pretty tremendous. I know you did. At this time, I'd like to open up public comment for items that are not on tonight's agenda. Madam Clerk, do we have any speaker cards?
We do. Farrah Coloma.
Hello.
Hi, Farrah.
Good evening, Council members and community members of American Canyon. I'm excited to share a little bit about something that's really close to my heart. It's our new nonprofit called Friend Doors, Inc. Friend Doors was born out of a simple question. How can we support the people, schools, and organizations doing great things in our community? And how can we do it together? It started with my husband, Ramsey. He became the head cross-country coach, and he had eight cents to his name. And he said, I need fifty, I need $650 to pay for our meat. TJ's our boba business. We were happy to support him, so we paid for that meat and sponsored the cross-country team. But it got me thinking, like, who else needed funds in our community? And I came to find that many teams and organizations lack funding they needed to have a successful season or successful school year. And then it got me thinking more. How can we create opportunities to support? How can we use what we already have, which is our food truck community and our network of small businesses, to help raise funds that they need? That's when the fundraising initiative started, and the idea behind Friend Doors, Inc. really came to life. I contacted my two friends, Carla, where's Carla? Carla, she's from Cook-Fry Gio, and Sophie from Coffee and Coco on the Go, and said, hey, let's start fundraising. So our mission is simple, to raise funds through events that directly support schools, nonprofits, and other organizations. In American Canyon, we've had the chance to fundraise for all the local public schools, and we've created mini-markets to help small businesses grow. Our last event was a meet-and-greet with Kalena Azabuki from the Golden State Warriors. Student athletes from ACMS and people from the community were able to meet him and get autographs. We brought in our local food trucks and retail vendors along with a DJ. We have been part of many sporting events, elementary school functions, and hosted mini-markets at Tractor Supply. And every time we've hosted an event, it was more than just raising money. It was about building community, lifting each other up, and showing that together we can really do more. With our nonprofit, we're not just, we're just, we're just getting started, and we're looking forward to collaborating with more schools and other nonprofits and fellow small business owners to make a bigger impact. We would love the support from the City of American Canyon. In supporting us, we can do our part in supporting our community through what we know best. We have big dreams for our nonprofit, and part of that is being able to give back and supporting those like my husband, Coach Ramsey, who gives of himself to make an impact in our students' lives. Please keep us in mind for opportunities where we can serve and partner with others to make a difference. Thank you for your time and giving me, giving to me to share about our new profit, our new nonprofit.
Sophie Borjan, Borgand?
Good evening. My name is Sophie Borja. Good evening, Mayor, City Council members, and anyone who thought this was the line for free food. You're in the right place, sort of. I'm here to recognize Filipino-American History Month, which is long overdue for the spotlight. Let's rewind. In 1587, Filipino sailors landed in Morro Bay, California, before there was a California, before Starbucks, and definitely before anyone has saying influencer. By the 1700s, some of the, some of those same Filipinos were down in Louisiana Bayou like, let's mix a little gumbo and some adobo. And just like that, we had the Filipino, we had the first Filipino-American village in St. Malo, Louisiana, where Filipinos were catching shrimp, frying fish, and probably low-key inventing surf and turf. So yes, gumbo and adobo might sound like two different worlds, but Filipinos, we've been blending cultures since before fusion food was trendy. Fast forward to 1960s, we helped kick-start the Delano Grape Strike with Larry Itlong, leading the charge. We didn't just bring lumpia to the potluck, we brought laborers' rights to the fields. That's real Filipino hustle. Fight the power, then pass the rice. We crossed the Pacific Ocean before it was cool. We've been colonized twice. We hear people butcher the word lumpia like it's the new CrossFit move. We are making sure folks know that Filipino history is American history. We've been here, we've been contributing, and yes, we've been feeding everybody at every community event since before potlucks had sign-up sheets. So tonight, let's give Filipino-American history the respect it deserves, and maybe also agree that gumbo and adobo should be the next power couple on Food Network. Marami salamat, and thank you for letting me share.
Carla Evan?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Carla, and I'm incredibly honored to speak on behalf of the team bringing you Manila Munchies, a one-of-a-kind celebration happening this October in honor of Filipino-American History Month. This event is our way of uplifting not just Filipino culture, but also our community. This year's theme is Global Pinoy, a tribute to the way Filipino identity has expanded, evolved, and influenced the world. We'll be showcasing fusion dishes and global-inspired Filipino creations, highlighting the creativity and diversity of Filipino food today. Manila Munchies Global Pinoy will feature delicious food vendors offering both traditional and fusion Filipino cuisine, merchandise artisan booths, live entertainment from cultural performances to modern acts, kids' activities for families to enjoy, and a truly special VIP Kamayan dinner where a guest will experience a traditional family-style feast, a powerful symbol of Filipino hospitality and unity. But to make this celebration a reality, we are asking for the city's partnership and financial support. Your investment will not only help us bring this event to life, it will create a lasting impact. A portion of the proceeds from Manila Munchies will be donated back to local schools such as ACMS to start up a new Filipino club, American Canyon High School, existing, their existing Filipino club, and also to support the upcoming Black and Filipino Film Project by local filmmaker Anna Sharp, titled For the Culture. Manila Munchies Global Pinoy is more than just an event. It's a platform for community connection, cultural pride, and creative expression. It's a chance for all of us Filipinos and friends alike to gather and honor the stories, flavors, and traditions that shape who we are. We need your help to make it possible. Your partnership will help us cover essential costs for permitting, security, and production while ensuring that the event remains free and accessible to the public. So let's come together this October 11th at Community Park Two from 3:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. to make it happen. Let's show what's possible, what's possible when a city stands behind its people. Thank you for your support, your heart, and your belief in the community.
Joan Bennett?
Thank you for Carla and Sophia. Now everybody's hungry. Hi, Joan.
Good evening, Council and people here, and Mayor Pierre Washington. I'm here because I am such a great supporter of the Gateway Award winner, which I hope most of you know is a person that is identified as giving a lot to their community, making things happen. Barry is one, Fran is one, I don't, I'm one, I don't know who else is here, this one. But it's the hard work and dedication of a long line of people who have given their heart and soul to this community. So, why I'm here is because at this parade... soul to this community. So why I'm here is because at this parade on July 4th, a 71-year-old small person grandmother was our Gateway Award winner. And that woman was not given the fanfare that she deserved, as has been done in the past. We have never had to have a Gateway Award winner walk, and she walked in front of her Seroptimus sisters. We've always had a vehicle of some kind to draw attention to the significance of this Gateway Award person. That did not happen this year. I can't tell you how upset it has made me because this woman deserved a lot more than she got. You could just imagine, one little woman walking with people behind her, and there was no fanfare, there was no whistles, there was no nothing. And I don't want to see this happen again. It is a responsibility of the people doing the parade, who are putting on the parade, to make sure that a Gateway Award winner is given what they're due, which is a vehicle of some kind. The least they could have done was put her in a fire truck. But that didn't even happen. So what that tells me is there's not an awareness of why it's important to have a Gateway Award winner lead the parade, because that's one of the big things that they get when they get to be a Gateway Award winner: they lead the parade. So picture, 71-year-old grandmother walking. Not acceptable. Should not ever happen again. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing that, Joan.
Valerie Zizek-Maurice.
Hello, everyone, council, mayor, city staff. I'm just here tonight to say thank you to everybody who's been supporting Meet Me in the Street. As you all know, I am the president/CEO of the American Canyon Chamber of Commerce, the creator behind Meet Me in the Street, and we are so proud for the success that once again has came out in the summer of 2025. We have seen record numbers, record attendance, and record vendors as well. So without the support of everybody working together in American Canyon to put on this event, from Parks and Rec, city staff, Public Works that are out there manning the closure for us, the American Canyon Police Department, the Fire Department, it's such a beautiful sight to see all of American Canyon come together, support one another, smiling faces, vendors being patronized, food trucks being patronized. So I just want to thank you all for yet again supporting Meet Me in the Street, coming out, supporting the Chamber of Commerce. And with that, I do have one last ask. The American Canyon Chamber of Commerce has one lacking entity at Meet Me in the Street, and that is adult volunteers. So if there is anybody in this room that knows somebody that could come out and volunteer with us from 2:00 to 5:00 o'clock before the event starts, there's a lot of work to be done to bring in the vendors, to make sure that everything is happening safely and smoothly out on the street. And I'm just asking anyone from the community that could spare a few hours to come out and help us. The last event is August 13th. You can meet us at the North Hampton Park at 2:00 p.m. at the American Canyon Chamber-branded tent, and we'll be there to give you a safety vest and assign you some duties, and the support would be greatly appreciated. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Valerie.
Jeanette Goyet.
Good evening, Mayor Washington, city council members, and members of the public. My name is Jeanette Goyet. I've been a longtime American Canyon resident. For the past two and a half years, I've spoken up regarding several topics, mostly spoken up about the wetlands, Measure J, K, and voter participation concerns. I want to express my extreme disappointment regarding the vote on April 7, 2025, seems like history, doesn't it, at the LAFCO meeting. Despite overwhelming opposition to adding GIV property to the American Canyon sphere of influence, the LAFCO Commission voted 3 to 2 in favor of adding this property to the American Canyon sphere of influence. As I understand it, one of the main LAFCO commissioners was not in attendance, so David Orow, an alternate, was available to participate. Being that Mr. Orow is on the American Canyon City Council, it seems as though he should have recused himself from voting. For me, this appears to be a conflict of interest. Why was this vote rushed through? Why couldn't the vote wait until the original commissioner returned? I don't know the answers to that. And another topic, but I feel related and connected to my overall concerns about the city of American Canyon. And it is a wonderful place to be, but not perfect, I guess. You see, I'm still upset about our vote on Measure K being ignored back in 2022, and then Measure K never being put up to the vote of the people in 2024. With Measure K, as I understand it, there seems to be no control over development. Environmental laws and regulations can be ignored. Building warehouses can go unchecked. I hope I'm terribly wrong. If you look at all the warehouses in American Canyon, there seems to be many vacancies. One report I heard is that there's an 18% vacancy rate of warehouses. My view is that developers have more power in this community than the people who actually live here. I request that when you speak of open space, you are honest with the people, and let us know that open space could be a sports stadium, housing, or even a warehouse that stores wine, as long as the building is recreational, which I guess wine is. My biggest fear and concern is that the residents of American Canyon are being ignored or possibly bought and sold by developers, as is what is happening in the state and federal governments. Please show us your constituents the same respect you show the developers. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeanette, for your comment.
Robert Raven.
Yeah, hi. I'm a new resident here. A couple of years ago, I moved here. And I'm also concerned about governance and how, you know, the people don't seem to be listened to when it comes to their vote and their views on issues like Prop J. And then there's a runaround behind the scenes. I came earlier, actually, to speak about the lawsuits, and there was no one here at 5:00 o'clock when I, you know, so I was wondering why there wasn't. I know you guys went to secret meeting, but there's no way to talk about that. But one thing is that, you know, we're being sued by, you know, our neighboring city, and that's not normal. I've never been in places where, you know, that there's, what, four lawsuits in three different jurisdictions, including Marin County? And we also now have to hire a law firm at, I think it was $250 to $500 an hour because of this? So I think it's because of the growth that you guys have been doing unchecked growth. And Prop K, again, allows you to do unchecked growth, which is not okay. That should have gone to the people, and we, the people, should have had a say on that, like we did on Prop J, which was ignored. And it's not okay. And so how much is this going to cost? How much is that decision going to cost to rush this through for whatever reason? And again, why are you rushing it? What's the rush on all these projects? But apparently, there's some kind of reason why you have to grow, grow, grow at all costs, even at lawsuits, and disregarding the will of the people. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment, Robert.
I have no other speaker cards and no hands raised online.
Thank you. I'll close public comment, and I'll move on to agenda changes. Looking at my colleagues, are there any agenda changes?
Yes. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to pull item 14.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to pull—where did it go? Item, I think it is Computers Thinking.
Okay.
11.
Item 11?
Yep.
Okay. Any others?
I would like to pull item number nine, please.
There's a lot of pulling tonight.
Boy.
Okay, so pulling items nine, 11, and 14. Can I get a motion to accept the rest of what's on the council calendar? And then we will address each one of the—
So moved.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a second. Madam Clerk, can we get a roll call, please?
Yeah, just one moment. So we are moving to pull nine, 11, and 14.
Yes, ma'am.
Just give me one moment.
Yes.
Councilmember David Orow.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mark Joseph.
Yes.
Mayor Pierre Washington.
Yes, and I guess I will refer to Vice Mayor Joseph for pulling of item number 14.
Okay, we'll start in the order. On this item, mainly, I would like to continue it until we've had a better outcome relative to the ongoing mediations that we're doing with Watson Ranch. I see this as kind of part of the puzzle, but I'd like to wait until the puzzle is finished before we move forward on entering into that agreement. That's it in a nutshell.
Okay, would you make a motion to that?
Okay. If there's any discussion.
I do want to have a discussion on—
Sure.
I thought this was a time-sensitive agreement. Is this a time-sensitive thing that we're trying to meet a deadline?
Yeah, maybe I can give a little bit of the staff report. We'll treat this as a business item. So, yeah, so this item appropriates funds, or actually uses an existing appropriation from our Traffic Impact Fee Fund that's in our existing brand-new capital improvement program budget. And as a part of the budget this year, we have what's known as the Rio de Mar extension project. And so that extends from Watson Ranch proper westerly over to Highway 29, particularly to the traffic signal there at Rio de Mar. There are longer-term plans that MBTA is spearheading, along with the state of California, Caltrans, and the city, related to the entire corridor and improvement city to the intersections, as well as multimodal improvements and aesthetic improvements, undergrounding the whole kit and caboodle. Those are longer-term plans, very expensive plans. And so in the very near term, there is a desire to have a connection to Watson Ranch and the highway. And this item tonight would work on the design of that, call it an interim improvement. And the idea is to connect Napa Valley Ruins and Gardens in particular, but Watson Ranch more broadly, to Highway 29. The fact of the matter is, it's going to be pretty hard for Napa Valley Ruins and Gardens to be commercially viable without a connection to the highway. And so this interim improvement, while it wouldn't allow the full range of movements from the highway, would allow that connection. Once Rio de Mar is extended across the railroad tracks, there will still be a connection at Main Street, so there is some commercial viability there. The developer of the Napa Valley Ruins and Gardens, though, is requesting to have a direct connection to the highway. And that's what the design that's proposed here would accomplish. It would still have to go through a Caltrans permitting process, and then there would be additional expenses to actually construct those improvements. Those additional expenses, you know, would be on the order of at least 3/4 of a million dollars, is my guess. It's hard to know until they've been designed. So just wanted to make sure that the council understood this wasn't the cost to build those improvements, it was just for the design. But the developer of the Napa Valley Ruins and Gardens has said it's going to be almost impossible for that, you know, entertainment-related facility to move forward if it doesn't have good access to the highway, just for people, for tourists, for visitors to come and go. So, you know, the time sensitivity around that is really just to make something happen at the Ruins and Gardens. There isn't any sort of funding deadline or some other program that we're trying to catch up to. Sometimes we design projects because we have a funding cycle that we're trying to catch up to or whatnot. But this case, it's really just trying to deliver on the promise of Napa Valley Ruins and Gardens and to get something there sooner rather than later. So there isn't any urgency necessarily about this particular award. The more time that we spend not doing this, the longer it will be until there's a connection there, until there's activity there and so forth. So that's really the urgency behind it, but it's not tied to grant funding or some other outside deadlines. It's a complicated project, which is kind of why I think it will explain some of the costs. There's also a lot of time budgeted for meeting with Caltrans, so this is going to have to be a pretty interactive process with Caltrans. And we're not sure whether we're going to be able to get the full write-in, write-out. At this point, we think a write-in is more likely. A write-turnout is going to present some challenges with some of the existing infrastructure that's out there. We're not sure. We're going to try. We're not sure if the write-out will happen. We're pretty confident that a write-in can be made to happen. So that's the item tonight. Kim Lee Horn, I should just preface this: the consultant that we've recommended is the consultant that the Transportation Authority already has engaged. They're already designing and doing environmental documents for the bigger highway project. We felt it was, rather than going out for a competitive proposal process, we felt using the consultant who's already doing design work at this location would be, you know, much more streamlined. So we used a little bit of a unique approach there and are recommending them directly than going out and, you know, having somebody start from scratch, which would not be cost-effective in our mind.
Thank you, Mr. Holly. Well, we have a motion on the table right now. Do you either want to rescind your motion, or do you want to continue with it?
Or provide a little, a different perspective, maybe. I appreciate the rationale behind all that, and probably a write-in might be a reasonable interim solution. The concern is the cost and the timing. MBTA is in the environmental review phase. I think through Measure U, we've probably got the funding to do the design work and get it ready for construction. And my concern is that MBTA may be in a position to implement the roundabout or whatever the ultimate conclusion is at that intersection, you know, arguably two or three years after we go to the trouble of putting in this interim solution. And that wouldn't be that much of a problem, except for the fact that I'm concerned that most of the investment we're putting in would then be immediately torn up as we put in a different solution. And so spending a million-plus for something that will give us one or two years of value just seems like not the best use of our resources. And so the not-so-hidden agenda is, I'm a little worried about the expenditure of funds for the amount of time it's going to give us value relative, you know, relative to what MBTA is working on. So that's my bigger concern. As an interim, if we deferred this until maybe we had everything lined up with all of our discussions with Watson Ranch, this might be something that we throw into the kitty and hope we get longer value from it than a couple of years. But that's why I think now it might be a little premature.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Orow?
Yeah, I appreciate that, and I tend to disagree. I've been waiting for MBTA to do something on this highway since I've been on this council and even before, since I moved here as a citizen in 2005. We have an opportunity now to just do a study of an access point to what is known as the Town Center. It's not construction, it's not building, and even in that study, we can actually look at future plans for something that may or may not ever happen from the Napa Valley Transportation Authority. I would hope it does, and I hope it aligns with this agreement. My point is, I think, you know, this is—this is progress. It may not be perfect, but it's progress, and I think it's something worth studying. And it is a nearer-term option to gain access—to have an access point to what will be an important part of our city. I don't think we should delay this.
Thank you, Councilmember Orow. Vice Mayor.
Just—I don't want to belabor the point, but in defense of MBTA, much of the delay was because the city was advocating a six-lane highway when MBTA and Caltrans basically were saying they wouldn't support it. And so most of the delay was based on basically two sides not budging. Once we decided that a four-lane option is viable, then all of a sudden, we secured some funding, and we've been moving at a relatively fast clip. So I don't want to belabor the notion that MBTA drags its feet. The city and MBTA were at loggerheads for about eight or nine years, and when we finally got over that and began to move forward, that's when we're starting to make progress. We've done the program or the PSR, whatever that stands for. We're now doing the environmental. So I do believe MBTA— So, I do believe MBTA has the capacity to make good on its commitments. Granted, the funding for the whole project hasn't been secured, but there is funding that'll get us to the point where it's shovel-ready, and that's thanks to the voters approving Measure U. So, I would like to continue it. I'll make that motion. If it dies for lack of a second, that's fine. So, I'll make a motion. We continue this matter.
Mayor, just real quick, it is customary, although it is technically your discretion, it is customary to ask for public comment on business items, so.
Good point.
You might consider that before you take action.
Yeah, I mean, we have a motion on our table. We don't have a second. It appears as if we may be divided, but I would like to open up the public comment for item number fourteen, the Rio de Mar Extension and Route, State Route 29. I know we didn't have any speaker cards, but if you would like to have a comment, if you could raise your hand. Barry, you're the first one. Just identify yourself.
Yeah, Barry Christian, American Canyon. So, the Highway 29 Corridor Study will apparently, hopefully, give us sidewalks all the way up to the bridge over the railroad tracks, but not the bridge over the railroad tracks. And I haven't, you'd be able to ride it on the shoulder of the highway, but you, it wouldn't be safe, and I don't know if there's room there to put a barrier and create a bicycle lane on the bridge going over the Paley Loop. So, you've got a dead end there, and it wasn't included in the Highway 29 Corridor Study. So, the only way people are going to get north on that bicycle is if they can go into Watson Ranch and go up to Watson Lane and then come back out around, or on the other side, go all the way out eucalyptus to the wetlands and then come back up. So, it's a roadblock, and it may not be the most important issue, but there was a gal who came up American Canyon, and I was out at Newell Open Space. She said, "Can you help me find the vine trail?" She came, made it all the way from the city on the ferry, on her bicycle, all the way to American Canyon in Newell. She wanted to go to Napa, and she was stuck because there's no through. She had to go all the way back down Donelson Way, so that might be some consideration. And I would also like to think that maybe we don't have to wait until that entire development is completed and, you know, all the houses are sold and everything else before we have a bike route there, because, as I said, people are coming up from the city all the way to here, and once you get past Green Island Road, Devlin, you can get all the way up to the airport. So, it's a lot of trail that needs a few connections on it, and that could be one if people can get through there, then get up and get around that railroad bridge and then make that way. So, I don't know how it all plays out exactly, but this may be a consideration.
Thank you, Barry. Former Councilmember Ken Leary?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Recently, I attended a presentation, the city and the County Board of Supervisors regarding the Broadway specific plan, or the Highway 29 Plan. In that presentation, there was no mention regarding this proposal now. So, I'm concerned, how come that was not included in that? It appeared to be supposedly a comprehensive plan for the Highway 29 Corridor. So, I didn't hear any discussion regarding this. There was some talk about roundabouts at specific places, but there was nothing definitive. So, is this definitive in terms of the plan, or is it not? I'm kind of confused in whether the city and the county were, are they together on this? Pierre, you were there. Our supervisor, Belia, was there, put on this presentation, so I'd just like to have some clarification as to what's going on, because that was not included in that presentation, as I recall. So, I would like to have that clarified. So, if Mark's concerns are real, and we go and we do a study, make some recommendations, spend some money, and the county and the Transportation Agency is not on the same page. I think we need to be all on the same page. When I was on council, we looked at this, and I think describing the Broadway specific plan as a six-lane highway is a misnomer. It was, it basically, it had some turn lanes, but it wasn't six lanes going through. And basically, when I saw the plan that they presented, it was similar to our plan. So, thank you. I just, I think we need some clarity on all of this before we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken.
Mayor, I'm happy to provide a little bit of clarity. As far as this proposal with Kim Lee Horn, yeah, I mean, I didn't ask MBTA staff if they would agree, you know, to support this ever, but they were involved in the meetings where we talked about this with the consultants. They were joint meetings, and they had, this being, MBTA staff had suggested we contract directly with Kim Lee Horn rather than having MBTA, for example, add some scope and then having us reimburse them. So, you know, I would say MBTA would be supportive of this effort. We're all cognizant of, you know, the potential that maybe some of the improvements are not reused, and that possibility, but as far as where MBTA is, I would say they're supportive of this, at least at the staff level. This kind of thing wouldn't have come to the board, but the staff level is integrated with this. They're aware of the proposal, and, you know, they suggested making sure that the Caltrans process was robust, because they knew there was going to be some effort there. So, we actually refined the proposal with the help of MBTA staff and the consultant.
When Vice Mayor Joseph mentioned that spending a million dollars to get something done, I mean, was that also considered, that if we spend money on it, that would be considered whenever MBTA did any additional work, or would we be losing out on monies that we've already invested?
I think the reference was to the total cost when you include construction and potentially dealing with some utility issues. So, that was sort of an all-in, you know, this proposal is for pieces of paper with images and lines on them. And so, I wanted to make sure everyone was clear about what the all-in was going to be, because there's, you know, there's no sense in, you know, trying to mislead you by saying, "Oh, this is what the, the project is both things, it's about design and construction." So, we don't have an estimate yet on what the construction part is, but that's kind of my back of the envelope, just given the complexities of being right there on the state highway. Some of it may be torn out as you look at, you know, if you want to get really into the granular pieces, some of the overexcavation, some of the subgrade work, that all is a part of the existing area that probably isn't lost. Whether, you know, the asphalt that's put in is in the right place, probably not all lost, but, you know, again, there are going to be some pieces that are not going to be in the right place. So, you know, it's difficult at this point to know which, in part because MBTA hasn't selected an alternative, as far as the IR, it's difficult to necessarily know. Having a connection at, just to get real clear, though, having a connection at Rio de Mar was part of the presentation a couple of months ago now. Whether it be modified signals or roundabout was very much part of the conversation, and that's the additional benefit here of engaging Caltrans now on this fourth connection, fourth leg of Rio de Mar, because that's going to happen regardless of what the actual intersection design is. There will be a fourth leg, so there is quite a bit of benefit to engaging Caltrans on that fourth leg, because there's quite a bit of history. Many of you might remember, but there's quite a bit of history with that intersection, so there is some benefit to engaging Caltrans now on that.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Holly. We'll return back to public comment for, public comment. Mr. Mayor, Leon Garcia.
Well, thank you. It used to be. Leon Garcia, resident of American Canyon. I'd just like to add to the conversation. I think it's beneficial to, if the council votes to postpone this, to be more inclusive of the whole picture with it. You know, we have snapshot pieces. I didn't get to a previous meeting where this item came up, but I did serve on MBTA Board for 20 years, and during my 18-year term as mayor, this issue came up as something important to American Canyon. So, this is a crucial intersection, so design's important. But it's also to remember, for our full information in that decision, we've got a railroad to deal with also, and there's, we're in agreement with the developer on that. We have to reiterate that, what that agreement is. The only issue was, do we go over, or do we go under? We've got to work with the railroad. That intersection in terms of how you have access to Watson Ranch and the development and the economic benefit that's going on in that area, it needs access, and we have to review that part as well. So, I appreciate that you take those all considerations in part of your discussion as well. It's a holistic picture, not just an intersection, yeah. So, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor Garcia. Any other public comments? Do we have anybody online that may have raised their hands for public comment?
I have no hands raised online.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I'll return to the council for further discussion. We do have a motion on the floor, and I will wait to see if there will be a second. Seeing none, I will ask the council if there is another remedy or another motion that may want to be submitted. Seeing none, then I think by default, this gets continued maybe into our next city council meeting, so we can have, put it on the agenda and probably do a little bit more fact-finding.
Yeah, that would be correct, Mayor. At this point, if there's no action, then yeah, this item doesn't go forward. So, if it's, if, so, would like to bring something back at some point. The questions that you might have would be helpful for me to be able to go gather the additional information that you need. It's not, it's not clear to me. I understand Mark's point, his, what I understand his point is, let's wait until, you know, essentially, we get much closer, we're done with our First Amendment on the development agreement, and then bring this item forward, you know, six to nine months from now. So, I don't see there to be a substantive question with the proposal, it's more of timing. If there are, you know, and that, I'm not going to be able to, there's no questions there, that's just a substantive issue on timing. If there's actual questions with the proposal or other things that I can go get additional information, I'd be happy to do that and bring it back when those questions, I just know the questions.
Vice Mayor, do you have a specific?
In that regard, yes. I think it's important to me to know how much of the engineering analysis will be beneficial in the long run. I guess the biggest concern for me is how much effort are we getting into? For example, when you talked about working with Caltrans and queuing them up to that as an intersection, as a four-way intersection, is important. So, there's some value in my mind of having somebody working to kind of pursue some of our objectives. So, if there's some way of clarifying how much of this is work worth doing versus how much might be torn up in two years, that kind of thing. If there's a way to clarify that, because, you know, if we're going to be able to retain three-quarters of the effort, then maybe it makes sense to move forward. If we're just doing a lot of work and then we're going to more or less ignore it and move in another direction, then that's what starts to give me the heartburn. So, if, to me, if you could identify in some manner, I don't expect it to be a precise percentage, but in some general sense, how much of this is good work that will have ongoing benefit?
Okay.
The big issue.
And I would add that if you could bring back some staff report data from the Napa Valley Transit Authority as well, supporting, that they support, which, the work that you're talking about, I think that would be helpful as well, and I guess since we have the chair.
I was going to say, I might be able to assist in that regard.
Yeah, so that would, we all put our due diligence in to bring the information back and could be a little bit more informative.
Councilmember Oro?
Yeah, with that, I mean, I think, I think there's a compromise here. Vice Mayor Joseph, I would make a motion to bring this back on the second meeting in August as an agenda item with that information, and that way, we can act on it and not wait 10 months until all these negotiations are done. Or maybe we decide in that second meeting in August that we got to wait 10 months because nothing aligns.
Okay.
I'll make that motion.
You want to make that motion?
Just real quick on the date. So, our August 19th meeting is scheduled to be a joint session with the Planning Commission. We'll talk about development standards and those sorts of things. So, it's not going to, you will be here, all five of you, hopefully, will be here. You could take action. That isn't quite what we had in mind.
Okay, then make it the first meeting in September.
September 5 is my calendar brain is telling me, but maybe it's the third.
Okay, the second.
Well, I was looking at my clock.
Just, I don't want it 10 months from now, is what I'm saying.
Neither would I.
The first meeting in September. It's right here, hold on. September 2nd, that's my bad, September 2nd.
Thank you.
That's my motion.
So, we have a motion on the floor?
I'll second that.
We have a second. Can I get a roll call, please, Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Lamatina?
Yes.
Councilmember Oro?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Joseph?
Yes.
Mayor Washington?
Yes. We also pulled out item number 11 by Councilmember Oro, if you'd like to express your.
Yes, thank you very much. So, this is a resolution authorizing the city manager to approve a purchase order from Pace Supply Company not to exceed $200,000 annually. And so, for those who haven't read the pack yet, it's critical items like valves, couplings, pipe leak detection, stuff like that, that our Public Works and probably our Public Works Department uses for items, the essential equipment. In that report, it says the city established an annual purchase supply pace in the amount of $100,000. Obviously, inflation's gone up, but in here, it noted that tariffs are also having a significant effect. So, we're going from $100,000 to $200,000. There is, a fire hydrant repair is now $5,000 to $10,000. I'm just trying to understand, because I'm trying to think through the Trump administration's effects on tariffs and how it's affecting us, and I want to just call that out in terms of, do we need to begin planning for budget items like this? Because that's a doubling of an expense in a year that we haven't had before. I mean, fire hydrant doubling in price, are there other items for that? Does anybody, what can we expect here? I mean, I'm going to have to approve this, because boom, it's, hey, it was 100, now it's $200,000 for random, you know, Public Works equipment that is essential to what we need. I'm just trying to get an understanding of what we're going to expect here.
My recollection, if I can butt in, when we were approving the membranes for the wastewater plant, it also acknowledged that tariffs were bumping the price up a little more than we thought. It wasn't 100%, but it was significantly higher. So, I think Councilmember Oro's got a good point. There's a lot going on that's starting to push prices up, and, you know, that sooner or later translates into why we're asking to raise water rates, not immediately, but as a precursor, four or five years from now, when we're talking about rates, this is all part of the equation. But, you know, so I'm as concerned as anyone else, and hopefully, things will settle down, but who knows?
It's apparent that we have Norman Woods. Are you about to make a comment on?
Yeah, we have, we have multiple things going on here. This particular item is both a cost increase, which tariffs are a part of it, inflation's a part of it. It's also sort of procedural in the, it isn't a doubling of costs from year over year. What you're seeing here is more of a streamlining on purchases. So, we've been spending money, having an aggregate purchase order of that amount will help us be, you know, be more efficient with our time. But we are seeing costs increase related to tariffs, and Assistant Director Woods here can, I think, provide some examples specifically related to material costs. He'll share that in a moment. But Vice Mayor Joseph, I think, hit on what was probably a bigger number related to our membranes, and we had one set of membranes we purchased, this was, I want to say, two council meetings ago. Noted in the staff report, there was about a $46,000 hit directly on tariffs. This wasn't a, you know, inflation over time. It was literally on the invoice. Here is your tariff, because we import those from France, I think, right?
Those are from Canada.
Oh, Canada, my mistake. So, we, the only people that make these membranes are in Canada, there is no other alternative. Literally, there was a line item that said tariff. And so, the challenge with that, to your point, Councilmember Oro, is we're buying more membranes. We're replacing more membranes, we're going to be hit with that again. So, from a very big picture, you're spot-on to call that out. As it relates to hydrants and those materials, you want to talk a little bit about what you've, what you've got?
Going to lift it up this time, last time I was ducking down. So, speaking with our supervisor, oh, it's about, see, you came up and saved me this time, thank you. Speaking with our maintenance supervisor, Francisco Ramirez, who's been working for the City of American Canyon for 20 years, he's been fixing hydrants in this community for 20 years. He approached me a couple of months ago and said, "Hey, the cost of these fire hydrants are going up, which is causing the go-over-the-pace, causing problems with finance in regards to them having to go over there, get aftermarket things," because it's now over $5,000. because it's now over $5,000. The checks cost more money, the fittings cost more money. The CAGR, the CAGR, which is a compound annual cost, yeah, ground cost for, for, for these, for these parts, are part of the problem that you have here is just over time, I think, costs more. Yes, Pace is a distributor of these things, but based on the fact that tariffs are put on worldwide to get these pieces, to get these fittings, to get these valves, you have a run on those. So within the United States of America, those costs are being passed to distributors. They don't get the whole tariff, the 25% or the 35%, but some of that cost 5%, 6%. So over the next, you know, until 2030, these costs are going to continue to jump up and climb up on us. So no, they're not a manufacturer, but a distributors. And even distributors are passing costs on to people like American Canyon. You add the development that we're having here with the number of hydrants that we have and emergency repairs that our team is going out to fix the development, that also adds to the cost. So we're doing more fires than we have typically in the past. So that's part of what's being added to that pace. Now, the whole entire $2,000 doubling, we may not use all that, but what it does is allow the flexibility for us to be able to respond within our community when you have those emergency breaks. Because the alternative to that is we don't have that flexibility. We can't get to these emergency repairs and then we fall short on it. And then that's a whole nother conversation, other than tariffs stopped us from doing this or annual costs kept us from doing this. So it's that kind of weighing of the conversation that you guys are looking at right now.
So the tariff impacts are real?
Oh, they're real. Right now for, you say like Pace, 5%, 6%. But, you know, with, as Jason referred to, our UV direct costs, those are direct costs. And that $46,000, that was for this year that they felt that they gave us a deal on because we had an agreement with them. Next year, if the tariffs are just as bad, the costs will probably be even more. So instead of it being 46, it could be 100,000, it could be 75,000. We won't know until it's actually that time to order them again.
Thank you. Thank you. So Councilmember Oro, were, were your goal to pull that out of consent just to have the conversation? Or were you opposed to it being approved?
I just wanted to understand it before I voted on it.
Okay.
And have a clear understanding of the impacts of the Trump administration's tariffs on local communities. It is real.
Okay. And how are you feeling now?
Oh, I was going to vote for it. I mean, like, we need fire hydrants, right? You know, we need parts, but, you know, we should not be self-inflicting ourselves with this kind of nonsense.
I agree. I'll entertain a motion.
So with that, if there's no other comments, I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2025, next in order. A resolution authorizing the city manager to approve a purchase order for Pace Supply not to exceed 200,000 annually.
I'll second.
I have a second. Can I get a roll call, please? Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Lamatina?
Yes.
Councilmember Oro?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Joseph?
Yes.
Mayor Washington?
Yes, and thank you, Councilmember Oro. We have one final item that was pulled, item number nine. Councilmember Lamatina?
Thank you. I pulled item number nine, facility naming, because I would like to take a moment to highlight the hard work that the Parks and the Community Services Commission put forth in gathering the feedback from the community to name our, our parks, our COME 1 and 2, and the Napa Junction, former Napa Junction Elementary School. So that is why I, I pulled the item and I just wanted to thank the community and everyone for working so hard.
Thank you, thank you. So then with that said, would you like to make a motion to move forward with that item?
Sure. I'd like to make a motion to, I don't have the agenda up. A motion to approve, accept item number nine.
Can I get a second?
I'll second.
We have a second?
Did we have a public comment?
Yes.
Oh.
We didn't, but we could. Yeah, yeah, if you, yeah, feel free.
Karen Fritz?
Hi, Karen.
City Attorney, Council, Mayor, members of the public. Oh, I'm okay. I'll stand on my toes. Yeah. Anyway, on the renaming of the parks, I'm not a fan. But one of them in particular, I think, needs to remain the same. It is a historical park. It has been a part of American Canyon from the beginning. And I don't feel that just because we have this influx of new community members and it's not something that they seem to think is a good fit. I think that's an unfair analogy of that because American Canyon has been here a long time and there are a lot of very senior members in this community. I think Community Park 1 should remain Community Park 1 or just Community Park. Now, the other two, I don't have an issue with that so much, but I do think that Community Park 1 should remain American Canyon's Community Park. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment, Karen.
And just to clarify, that's the park that we want to rename to Rio Grande Park?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
You can name it Community Park at Rio Grande, but I think it needs to remain Community Park.
Thanks, Karen. And, and just a little history behind that, you know, we did have a committee put together and they did some, a lot of hard work getting it to where we are. So, I mean, I appreciate your comment as well.
And I understand that, but again, like I said, someone goes, it's been here a long time?
I know. Thanks, Karen. Any other public comment? I'd like to return back to the council for, well, we have a motion and we have a second. Can we get a roll call, please? Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Lamatina?
Yes.
Councilmember Oro?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Joseph?
Yes.
Mayor Washington?
Yes, but thank you, Karen, for your comment. There's nothing else pulled, so, okay. We go to, we'll go to.
Mayor Washington, if we could get a motion on the rest of the consent calendar?
We did already. We got that in the beginning.
We.
Yeah.
I think we pulled it and then we started.
Well, what I, what I did was pull every, I pulled the three items and then I made a request to have a motion for the seven items to continue. And we made, we made that.
Yeah.
I misunderstood. I thought we were motioning to pull those items.
Oh. No, we were motioning to approve.
So pull the items and approve in the same motion?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. Okay. With that said, we'll move into public hearing and we have one item on public hearing and that item is item number 16, the Napa Airport Corporate Center Development Agreement Extension.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council, members of the public. William He with the Planning Commission, Planning Division. Very happy to be here today and give a presentation on the Napa Airport Corporate Center Development Agreement Extension Project, or as we like to call it, the NACCDA. I just want to give folks a, some bearings as for this project. The NACC project is on the northern side of the city. It's a kind of like a boot-shaped parcel of approximately 30 acres. It's marked in red in the slide here. To the north is South Kelly Road, to the west is Devlin Road, to the east is our current pick and pull business, and to the south is Diablo Timber. This project has been, has obtained multiple entitlements and approvals over the years. Notably, in 2018, the project has a certified environmental impact report, an approved tentative subdivision map, and conditional use permits for lots 1 and 2 and 4 and 5. They also have design permits for lots 4 and 5. Here's the overall site plan to the NACC project. Lots 1 and 2 consist of buildings A and B. Lots 3 has building D, but that was approved under Napa County on a previous entitlement. And then we have lots 4 for building E and lot 5 and building G. Altogether, the, the warehouse projects consist of about 190,000 square feet of warehouses and that's the project site overall. But today, we're not going to be here to talk about the entitlements previously, but we're here to talk about the development agreement. The project obtained a development agreement on August 4th of 2020, which would expire in five years or on September 3rd, 2025. In March 6th of this year, the new property owner, G3 Enterprises, requested a 10-year development agreement extension to expire on September 3rd, 2035. And the, in the agreement, it would provide the same public benefits as the original development agreement. For the application for the DA extension, the project did go through a public hearing with the Planning Commission. And in the Planning Commission, the commission recommended to reduce that 10-year extension to five years. And that has been explained in the project staff report. So with that being said, staff's recommendation is to approve the five-year development agreement extension. And I, I, that's all I have. If you have questions, I ask you to, to save that for the, the, the project manager of G3, who's here also today, so.
Thank you, Mr. He. Thank you for that information. And are there any clarified questions from the council? Seeing none, I'd like to offer, oh, wait a minute.
I, I don't have any clarifying comments, but I just did want to do, I think it's an ex parte communicate or discussion. I did meet over Zoom with Steve and discuss the project and got his perspective and, and explained mine as well. So just for the record, I have talked to him.
Thank you, thank you. Councilmember Oro?
Yeah, I'll do the same ex parte disclosure I talked to him this afternoon. And as soon as we get through this, I believe Mr. He asked him to present before we had a discussion. Are you, is he doing a presentation, correct?
Yes, he has a small presentation prepared.
Councilmember Lamatina?
And I also spoke with Steve via Teams Zoom, so.
Okay, thank you, thank you for addressing the disclosures. And I as well, I've spoken to Steve, both on Zoom and then with our city council, our city attorney several weeks ago. So with that said, Steve, I was going to ask you to do your presentation.
And thank you, William, for stepping in in Brent's absence. I know he wasn't able to make it, but he wanted to be here tonight. It's been a long night, so I'm going to keep, try to keep it brief. My name is Steve Lay. I'm the Property Development Manager for G3 Enterprises. And tonight, I just wanted to give a brief presentation and I apologize if some of this is redundant. I might gloss over some of the things William already talked about. But I want to tell you who G3 is, what the project is about, how far we've come in our last three years that we've changed ownership and purchased the property, and then what we're asking for in this DA. So G3 is a family, family-owned company specializing in packaging and logistics solutions for the beverage and agricultural industries. Pretty broad, but basically agricultural logistics. So what we do is we get the grapes from the vineyards to the crush facilities and to the wineries. And about 40% of the grapes in California go in our green gondolas and we handle the transportation, the logistics of that. We have, in the last several years, as everyone in this room may know, the wine industry is declining, so we've been diversifying and we've been going after other agricultural commodities such as pistachios, corn, wheat, organic fertilizer, those sorts of things. Manufacturing, we produce labels for the beverage industry, including wine, spirits, and craft beer, corks, enclosures, and specialized wine equipment. We are a 3PL. We have a division that does third-party logistics, so we handle materials for other companies as well as our own. Global bulk wine transportation, transportation and other warehousing solutions. We own and operate a silica sand mine in Byron, California, and there we process the silica sand, a high-quality silica sand. And that's sold to different bottle manufacturers and they'll melt it down and make a glass out of it. We also sell it to golf courses all over the bay for top dressing and bunker sand. And then there's also real estate development, which is where I come in. And we essentially support our 3PL and our warehousing teams. And we construct warehouses and provide tenant improvements for various types of customers, not just the wine industry. We have corrugators, extrusion company, various different fulfillment companies, pots and pans, you name it. We do a lot of it. Cold storage for nuts and different agricultural commodities as well. So all that to say, we're not just the wine industry. I know there's concern that the wine industry is declining. We are positioned well so that we can attract customers and we know the other markets as well. So that's our intent, is to find a tenant to put in place in these buildings. So here's, here's another high-level view that kind of complements what William had. You can see our project over here. This is what I like to call NAC, Napa Airport Corporate Center. Across the street is a transfer station and Geovinoni and Napa Logistics Park, some nearby developers. I also wanted to point out wetlands, and I'll get to this in a second, but these existing wetlands adjacent to Boone Drive that are in gray, these have already been developed as part of Napa Logistics Park. Here, to show you the lay of the land, this is where our proposed mitigation land for those wetlands is located. Also on this exhibit, you can see a G3-owned warehouse. It's about 260,000 square feet and we own and operate that. And some other local presence is we've got a TAP label manufacturing division just up north a little bit on Gateway in Napa. And then also Colopac is another G3 company that does wine processing equipment and that's on Camino Gerardo in Napa. So here is a high level of two different site plans. They don't look too much different, but this is what Panatoni, our predecessor, had worked hard to come up with, with the city. And G3 had, once we purchased the property, we made some tweaks to improve it from a layout, safety, and circulation standpoint to separate cars and trucks better. And we also revamped the architectural designs a little bit, as you can see here. And so that, that was our minor modification that we worked through with the city. Wetland mitigation, as I brought up before, this map over here shows in blue areas that are not impacted by this project. So up here and over here, areas in, in red unfortunately are impacted by the project and we are mitigating at a two-to-one ratio. So each acre that we disturb, 0.66 acres total, is going to be mitigated by new wetlands over adjacent to where Napa Logistics already created these wetlands. And here's a little design of where we, so this is, this is our current plan right now. Also, we've been working with the city staff on the South Kelly Road Improvement Project. And I'll, I'll take Brent Cooper's words that if you've been on that road recently, the road is resorting back to nature. So by widening the project at the road and improving circulation on that street is, is important to the community. This is a city-driven project, so G3 is paying a fair share towards this project. And we're also coordinating with the city to include and implement some of the conditions required as part of our project into their city project now so that the public can benefit from these improvements now. And when we go in, whenever we develop after the city finishes this project, we're not ripping up a new road and dealing with pavement moratorium and potholes. Another advancement that we've made on the project is there's this one-acre residential lot adjacent to the Napa Airport Corporate Center. It's often referred to as the Gonzalez property. Well, we negotiated with the, the neighbor and they were willing to sell. And we purchased that property not too long ago. And the, the purpose of that is, well, it was a residential lot in the middle of an industrial area. You've got the pick and pull to the side, you've got the transfer station across the street. It didn't make sense. The resident was sometimes taking left turns over onto SR 29, so it was just, the driveway didn't make sense. And by purchasing that property, we feel that our, our plan right now is to demolish the house and then, in the future, incorporate that into our development project. We think it's going to be annexed in the city by 2030. This is, I wanted to bring to your attention that this letter came into our hands when we were in due diligence with Panatoni. What this essentially says is, it's a letter from the city to Panatoni, the prior owner. And it says that our fair share obligation and our fair share costs are $395,000 and some change and that fully satisfies this project and that is the extent of our costs. So we, G3 hung our hat on those costs and we built that into our financials. And again, this was a few years ago where, when vacancy rates were about 2%. It was a lot less than it is now. We're in like 15%. And since then, we've become aware that there might have been a discrepancy in what is actually. in what is actually owed in their fair share costs. So given this letter and the ironclad statement that that is our limited cost, we are in good faith, working with the city and the developer, other developers that are going to be reimbursed on this project, to come up to a cost, up to and not to exceed $1.91 per square foot, which translates to about $220,000, above and beyond what we had initially accounted for. So as I already stated, the wine market is declining, but G3 is very diversified, and I think we're very well-positioned to try to attract tenants outside of just the wine industry. Warehouse vacancy rates, as I've said before, when we purchased the property, were about 2%, and it has since increased to, I'm told, 15% to 16%. So at the end of the day, what we're looking for, I know there's been concern about developing a property when there's already vacancy around here. We're not trying to do that. We're trying to find tenants to fill the space, and that's actually why we're here today. We're just asking for more time. We, we really need more time to develop, because if we were to develop an empty warehouse on spec, or in other words, without a tenant, we would be fueling the fire and making the situation worse. So here's what I'm asking for. I'm asking for, originally, we asked for 10 years. City staff said, came back and said five years would be more palatable, because that's what we had originally agreed on. The original Development Agreement was five years. So we're okay with that. We're asking for a five-year Development Agreement extension and fair share costs to be due upon the first building permit, and kind of a pay-as-you-go approach versus upon the expiration of the DA. And the same conditions of approval. And that concludes my presentation. And again, I'm, thank you for your time, and I'm more than happy to answer any other questions about this development.
Thank you, Stephen. And we do have a few questions, starting with Vice Mayor Joseph.
Steve, when you say the same conditions of approval, are you, does that reflect the amendments that staff has plugged in?
With the exception of number four.
But number four is the updated development standards, including the new greenhouse gas?
Number four, number four is the, the terms of the fair share obligation payment.
Oh.
So once, I, I, all I want to do is defer the payment of those, the fair share costs until...
So just for my edifications, as I indicated to you, one of the things I liked about staff's amendments was it essentially would require that you would bill to the current standards, which are those improved greenhouse gas standards. So you're okay with that, Stephen?
Yes.
Okay. All right, well then, that makes me feel good. And, and certainly I'm okay with the five years, because that's what staff worked out. The, the payment of the, the fair share, there's a part of me that says, if you haven't found a tenant in five years, you're probably going to come back and ask for another extension and probably include that same, we'll pay when we pull permit. So there's a part of me that feels like, that may look good, but at the end of the day, you're probably not going to pull any, or pay anything until you pull something, which is what I hope everybody's looking forward to. So I don't know if that makes sense to you, but...
Yeah, I, I think it's, it's paid a fair, it's fair to pay as you go, because I don't know when we're going to develop, I really don't. But with the current market conditions and these fair share improvements and these costs, we're just hitting from, getting hit from different angles. And it'd be fair, I believe, to pay once we get the first building permit.
Thanks, Steve. Before, there's no other clarifying question, but before I open up the public comment, on slide two, you had an acronym, 3PL. I know from a logistics standpoint what that is, but can you kind of explain that to the people here and those who might be viewing?
Sure, some companies handle their own materials, which in other words, they will do their own warehousing and handling and forklift driving and coordinate the logistics of getting from a regional distribution center or different facilities or hubs, so to speak. If you're a company and you don't want to do that, and that's not your core competency, and you want someone else to handle that, you just want to make the widgets or make the clothing, whatever, whatever it is you're doing, you can call someone like G3, and we can handle those third-party logistics movements for you.
Thank you. With that said, there's no other clarifying questions from council. I'll open up the public comment for any comments on item number 16. And I'll ask Steve and Mr. Yi to stay up there to help answer those questions.
I have Ernie Nodel.
Good evening, Ernie.
Good evening, council. I'm Ernie Nodel with Orchard Partners. We were the developer of the Napa Logistics Park. We worked with the predecessor to G3, Panatoni, for many years on providing a number of infrastructure improvements for the city of American Canyon. When G3 came in, we've, we've had a good relationship with them. We think they're a very respectable and honorable developer. And there was an issue on some of the sewer improvements whereby we had designed, constructed, and fully funded a large sewer project that all, that a number of other developers, including the G3 development, were to reimburse us for. And that was, that's been recognized in their design permits. They're very well aware of these reimbursements, but there was some discrepancy on how much those reimbursements would be. So we had some discussions. We have come to agreement, as Steve had stated, that we will, we will actually lock in their reimbursement at $1.91 per square foot for each of the buildings that they are planning to build. And we will be very satisfied with that contribution from G3. The ordinance that you have in front of you, there were six recommendations made by Planning Commission, and the first one was to add a sentence to paragraph D that would state the parties further acknowledge that they shall negotiate in good faith to modify the fair share infrastructure costs to better reflect current build-out development demands. Well, there's no more discussion on that. We've come to an agreement, so we would like to see a very minor amendment to that sentence. And we're proposing that it would state the parties further acknowledge that the fair share payments for the sewer improvements shall be revised to $1.91 per square foot of building area paid to the city and/or NLP. And then item number four, as Steve had stated earlier, the city had requested that the, the payment of the infrastructure reimbursements would take place either at the issuance of the first building permit or at the end of the five-year extension of their Development Agreement. That's contrary to the agreement we have with the city. In fact, our agreement with the city is when a developer builds a building, they will collect the reimbursement, and then they will pass that reimbursement back on to us. And we're, we're just going to honor our original agreement. We don't want to have to lock them down into paying things earlier than they need to. We're happy to wait for our money. It's, it's just what we had agreed to with the city. I've created the, the, the way that these amendments can be revised, and I can give them to the clerk to pass around.
And Ernie, are you done, or did you need a little bit more time?
Just to say, we're very supportive of this project, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nodel. Any other public comments, Madam Clerk?
I have no other speaker cards and no hands raised online.
Thank you. Okay, then I'd like to close public comment and return to council for item number 16. For any additional questions, statements, questions, or an adoption, and I will start with Councilmember Oro.
So confused, and this is probably for Mr. Lay. We were just handed a piece here that says that the sewer improvements shall be revised to $1.91 per square foot, or paid to the city in LLP. I thought you were arguing that you weren't in agreement to that. Is that correct?
No, we are. I know that there's a pending lawsuit regarding this. My biggest concern is just getting this Development Agreement extended. So if, what I can't have is a pause and deliberation for these costs, because I know the city is working with, there, there's a lawsuit going on. So if we can handle this $1.91 per square foot and get this passed before the deadline of next meeting and not delay this Development Agreement extension, then yes, that's...
So can you go back to your previous slide with the $220,000 and help me understand?
So what I, what I wanted to point out here is that when we purchased the property, we were under the impression that we would be locked into a cost of $335,000 for sewer improvements. I wanted to point out to the, to the council that we are in good faith increasing this cost to $220,000, by $220,000, sorry. So this $335,000 is going to go up to the neighborhood of $555,000.
Is that related to the $1.91 per square?
100%. If you take the 290,000 square feet of warehouse, multiply it by 1.91, that's how we come up with the 335 plus 220,000. I apologize for not making that more clear on the slide.
Right, and is that why the previous speaker isn't fully supportive of your project?
Is that why?
Yeah, is that one of the reasons why?
I'd imagine so, I can't speak for him.
Yeah, yeah. Listen, I'm, I'm okay with, I like the idea of number, actually, it's amendment four. I think I'm okay with having you pay when you pull a permit to do that. I think that's what we normally do for most clients. Can, Mr. Holly, can you clarify?
This provision has sort of two triggers. It has the more normal trigger, if you will, time of issuance of building permit, and then an extra trigger that says, and if, you know, the agreement comes and goes and they haven't pulled any permits, there's still the obligation to pay the fair share. So what the applicant with Steve has been advocating for is to strike that second half of that provision and to just pay if and when they pull a building permit. And the, the second half of that would go away, so there would be no obligation in the event that no building permit was issued. So that's, and that's what you heard from the other speaker as well, that they were comfortable with that as well.
Meaning that if, so they would never pay for those fair share if nothing is ever developed there?
Correct, yeah.
Okay. Is that it? Thank you.
Vice Mayor Joseph.
Yes, I mean, well, there's a part of me that is always happy when all the people presenting are on the same page. And I'm okay with, you know, paying it when you pull permits versus at the end, because theoretically, at the end of the five years, if we don't extend it, your entitlement, everything just kind of goes away. So you're starting from ground zero. So I'm okay with that half. As for the $1.91, I'm inclined to ask staff or our city attorney, does, if we agree to $1.91 in this case, is that any kind of a precedent or have any impact on anything else that's being worked out?
Okay, as you're aware, we've consistently advised since November of 2024 that the reimbursement rate...
Mr. Ross, your microphone?
It's on, yeah, a little closer, yeah. Okay, sorry. As you're aware, since November of 2024, we've advised that the reimbursement schedules have to be, you know, to be revised to reflect what's actually happening on the ground. You know, in this instance, with, between these two parties, if that's the agreement that's been reached, it resolves the issues between these two parties.
Okay, so it isn't binding one way or the other with the other parties?
This is only, the only concerns the two parties that have appeared before you and the representations that have been made.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ross. Seeing no other questions, I guess the ask is to adopt a waiver for the first reading for this docket item?
So yeah, procedurally, what the staff recommendation is to do what's known as wave reading by, wave the first reading and read by title only. And so what that means is you wouldn't read every word of the ordinance, you could just read the title of the ordinance. So procedurally, that's what it is. So there were, there were two, I think, sort of cleanup things that we need to get clarified. You know, right now, the way the ordinance in the agreement reads, it still requires the payment, even if a building permit's never issued. And it says the parties are going to work in good faith to figure out these reimbursement amounts. So if the council wants to change any of those, you would need to put that into your motion. I'll just say, regardless of whatever they've been thinking, or whatever its agreement between them, the, what the city's position on the reimbursement amounts and again, the costs and the eligibility, all those is not resolved. And so the agreement here is between the city and G3. So it's not between, this is an agreement between Napa Logistics, for example, and G3. This is an agreement between the city and G3. So we are not resolved, and I don't know what the effect of imposing a $1.91 number would be on those forthcoming calculations. If you hardwire a number in, I don't know what the result of those calculation refinements is going to be. I know it's now going to be a hardwired variable that will be a part of agreement. So I'm not sure the ramifications as a part of our revising those, those calculations. When you have a limited amount of variables, if you hardwire a fixed number in there, it has potentially downstream effects. So our advice would be to leave paragraph one as it is, the good faith negotiation, trying to figure out what the methodology is going to be. But, you know, staff is fine if you wanted to take out the, take out the part where it's the must-pay if no building permit's issued.
But the minus of the must-pay, I mean, tonight's ask is that we adopt a waiver of the first reading. Is that what this is about, correct?
No, it's the whole, it's the whole thing. Yeah, it's the first, it's the whole thing, yeah. Because the ordinance approves the agreement. So you're, you're waiving just the sort of oratory nature of reading the whole ordinance, but you would be approving, subject to a second reading, you would be approving the agreement.
Okay, thank you.
With the changes that you are agreeable to.
Okay, thank you. With that said, I will entertain a motion.
Well, I'm okay with the, the building permit angle. And I am concerned, like I said, you know, work, it's good that we have two parties that have worked out a deal, but there are other parties in the agreement. So just on, you know, for the sake of being cautious and worried about the city's position, I'm sympathetic to leaving the current language in about working on a fair share, and everybody agrees to pay their fair share. But I'd be happy to revise amendment four to simply say, you'll pay your fair share, you'll pay your infrastructure cost prior to issuance of a building permit.
And so Vice Mayor, if you wanted to make a motion to that effect, I'll, I'll bring back the point that we will have a second reading on this. And so I think you can, you can restate the recommendation with that added notation about a modification to, you know, what is item number four related to the payment only occurring if issuance of building permit? And we'll come back with the modified version of this at the final reading. So we, we don't need to have the exact language here, because it will be at a final reading. We'll make that touch.
But he's also making the motion to reading the ordinance number and then suggesting those modifications.
Right, so I'm just going for, you know, item two, not, you know, not both recommendations.
Correct, correct. And, no, I understand, I'm just saying you can, you can say that. You don't have to be super precise with your language, because we're going to take your intent and bring back in the second reading the exact version of what we think you said.
All right, well then, I will make a motion that we waive first reading and read by title only and introduce an ordinance to approve a five-year extension to the Napa Airport Commerce Center Development Agreement from September 3, 2025 to September 3, 2030, located at the southeast corner of Devlin Road and South Kelly Road, APN 057090086, file number PL25-0008, with an amendment indicating that the developers shall pay their fair share of infrastructure cost prior to the issuance of a building permit, and not necessarily at the end of the five years.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
I'll second.
We have a second, can I get a roll call, please? Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Lamatina?
Yes.
Councilmember Oro?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Joseph?
Yes.
Mayor Washington?
Yes. Thank you, Steve, thank you, Mr. Yi, and thank you, Mr. Nodel.
Thank you.
We will move to the business item. We have three business items. Item number 17, the parking restriction on Broadway and in the municipal lots.
Hello, Erica.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, city of American Canyon. Erica Almanzetti is Public Works Director. I also have the police chief, Rick Ring, right here behind me. I'm here to present this evening a proposal to adopt restrictions for overnight parking on Broadway from 2801 Broadway to southerly city limits and, and municipal lots. This item was in response to community concerns regarding... This item was in response to community concerns regarding overnight parking on Broadway and the Veterans Park parking lot. City Council requests this item to consider new restrictions. I met with the police chief earlier this year and we discussed possibilities. And the initial approach was to limit the park hours or the parking hours on Broadway and in the parking lot between the same hours that are approximately, you know, dusk till dawn. So 10:00 to 6:00 a.m., 10:00 p.m. to 6:00 a.m. along the stretch of road. And also, we've had other concerns at other municipal lots around the city, City Hall, Benton Way, where residents sometimes park their vehicles overnight or trailers or utility trailers. So broadening the park restriction, parking restriction to all city lots, with the first addressing, of course, along the Broadway area of Veterans Park. The, there's, there's two resolutions in front of you. One's for the parking restrictions specifically on Broadway and for the parking restrictions in municipal parking lots, since there are two different ordinances in our municipal code. With the Broadway in particular, there, there are other options available. This is like the first measured approach, cautiously approaching the prolonged parking on Broadway and other areas. There's another step with continuous monitoring, which is permit approach. I think that was brought up by members of the public wanting permitted parking in their residential areas, like Montevino or Conde Heine, for example. But those are usually reserved for larger cities such as San Francisco, Oakland, half a million to a million people compared to the size of a city of American Canyon. So we don't want to take that approach so quickly right now, jumping the gun, so to speak. And also a lot more enforcement action by the chief and his staff and his team. So the first approach is this measured one of just typical hours, 10:00 to 6:00, 10:00 p.m. to 6:00 a.m. and go from there, as well as having some robust outreach to members of the public because it'll be changed. I know when we brought the skate park, there was neighbors parking in the parking lots. And these parking lots are for everyone to use. So within the hours of the park being open. So with that, I'm here to answer any questions and/or the police chief here to my right that you may have on this item.
Thank you, Erica. And I'm sure that the community members in the Montevino area will be much appreciative of these ordinances coming down. So thank you for looking into it. One quick question I have is that I know that Broadway is probably considered one of our major thoroughfares. So I'm, I'm curious as to if that is the only reason why for that park area that we're doing the parking. Are we going to address the other parks in the city as far as hours of, our times being spent parking by the park or overnight parking at those parks? Or is that two separate, separate items?
You mean the on-street parking restrictions?
Yes.
I don't believe we have the same issues. Some of them are more deep in the residential areas where this is more of an arterial, major collector road. So you have more cars movement. The concern that brought to us was the fact that we have a high-density housing unit at the edge of our city limits that we're worried about. There's three parking spots, not to put the project on site, but the Home Key Project only has five onsite parking spots with the facility. If I recall, one of them's an ADA parking spot. So there is very big concern that there's going to be overflow parking and it's going to creep into the city limits. The other areas of the city where there's parks, it's more residential neighborhoods. So I'm not sure we're having any issues in those locations. So at this time, we're only looking at Broadway as being more of a concern as far as on-street parking restrictions.
Okay. And the reason I ask, I know that when Vallejo first submitted for this key, turnkey project, they made claims that, you know, there's no Vallejo parks near this location. All right? But they failed to acknowledge that, you know, there is an American Canyon park near this location. So with that said, I'm glad that we're moving forward with creating an ordinance to give our police chief and the police officers of our city more teeth to be able to address issues in that area. With that said, for clarifying questions, Vice Mayor Joseph.
Yes, thank you. And I agree. I think this is a good initial step. I think the biggest concern is going to be overflow parking at, at the Veterans Park and along the strip. So I certainly think it's the right thing to do. Jumping to the second item, the municipal lots. A quick question, if, you know, we have a limited number of lots that have EV charging stations. So if I were to buy me an EV car and I want to go in at 2:00 in the morning and drop it off and charge it, is that going to be an issue?
I'm going to defer that to the police chief.
So that would be a case of letter of the law or spirit of the law. So for those of you who don't know what that is, the letter of the law is a fine line in the sand. You know, this is the law. This is the way we're going to do things. Your car is getting towed immediately. Spirit of the law would be like, okay, this is a first-time offender. There's EV charger here. You know, I mean, they're, they're helping the environment by charging their vehicle. Let's let them charge their vehicle. They're not camping in it. We do have a no camping policy, sorry, ordinance in American Canyon already in place. So these signs are just to help reiterate that.
Okay.
As well.
And, and then if I leave the car there too long, the idling fee will get me and that'll be the motivator.
That has nothing to do with the American Canyon Police Department.
I know. But I'm just, just acknowledging that there is kind of a built-in enforcement. So once I've charged my car, I need to get out of there in 30 minutes. So I won't be there all night. Thank you.
Yep.
Seeing no other clarified questions from council, I'd like to open it up to public comment for item number 17. Madam Clerk, do we have anybody with the cards?
William Baker?
Good evening, William. Mr. Baker?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is William Baker. I am a resident of Montevino. On April 1st, I presented a petition signed by over 100 residents of the Montevino area requesting two policies from the city in anticipation of the increased parking and traffic near Veterans Memorial Park and the Montevino area. This is that petition, a copy of it, a copy of which was shared with you in early April. Today, Agenda Item 17 presents the essence of the first part of that request. I encourage you to support the resolution, which not only prohibits overnight parking on Broadway from Solano County Line to the Casitas, but also provides for a citywide ban on overnight parking at any city public park or other city parking lot. This parking policy being considered this evening is an important step in protecting American Canyon's public parks in general and the neighborhood of Montevino. The second request for a policy to limit overnight street parking in Montevino for its residents and guests remains unaddressed. The residents of Montevino will certainly return to you on this second and admittedly more complicated request. I encourage the council members to support item 17 on the agenda and to continually, proactively explore additional member measures to protect Veterans Memorial Park and the surrounding neighborhoods. The Broadway project will open in the, in the remaining months of this year. The project will present a stream of challenges to American Canyon, our park, and the neighborhoods it sits next to, some of which we are addressing this evening. Very soon, tenants will begin moving into the Broadway project. Our council and the citizens of American Canyon will face the challenge of being good neighbors with tenants with very different life experiences, living next to our largest city park. We need to balance these unique individual needs while maintaining a safe environment for our public parks and nearby neighborhoods. The challenges presented by the Broadway project will require constant vigilance and ongoing dialogue. Together, we can, we can meet these challenges. This evening, we make another step by restricting overnight parking on Broadway in our city parks. Thank you for your consideration and for voting affirmatively on Agenda Item 17.
Thank you, Mr. Baker.
I have Russell Charpentier.
Good evening, Russell.
Good evening, Mayor Washington, City Council, and fellow citizens. I just wanted to amplify William's comments. I'm wholeheartedly in support of this parking ordinance. But quite honestly, if they can't park next to the park, where are they going to go? Right into Montevino. So I think an essential part of this is parking permits, parking, resident parking permits. The project as we know it is going to create a multitude of problems. Forty-eight units with up to 96 residents with about three resident parking spaces. And they're going to have friends. And their friends are going to come over and visit because there's no security. There's no psychiatric services. There's no sobriety requirements for residency of this. And this is going to have a tremendous impact on American Canyon's southern border and all of us that live there and anybody who wants to come to that park. So I know we've had discussions on this for, well, their project's two and a half years behind schedule now, so we've been talking about this for some time. But this is going to be a major issue. I think we need to get out ahead of it before it becomes a major problem for all of us. And it's, it's going to severely impact Southern American Canyon here on our border. Our neighbors have been so nice to build this facility, to share, share their issues with us. And their police department is wholly inadequate to deal with this. This Mulberry Project Commons up in Sebastopol, the police department is overwhelmed with, with a variety of suicides, arrests, unwanted subjects, drug complaints, medical aid, fights, suspicious circumstance calls. And, yeah, this is going to have a huge impact on us. So we need to do something to get ahead of this before it becomes out of control. That's all I want to say. But I'm sure we'll have further discussions on this. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Russell.
I have no other speaker cards, and I do have one hand raised online.
Okay.
Justin, go ahead. Justin, can you hear me?
Can you hear me? Uh-oh. Can you hear me?
I can hear you barely, Justin. Can you turn up your speaker?
Yes. One second. Can I hear me?
It's, it's better. Go ahead.
Yeah, I do want to see the parking lot, not park, park. If we can make it color, that people can not park there. That red one is for emergency or blue or something. I think that maybe we can look at that in there and see what car can not, or people not park there. I want to make comment. Erica doing great work. Thank you.
Thank you, Justin.
Thank you, Justin. Any other comments?
I have no other hands raised.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I'd like to close public comment on item number 17 and return to council for any additional statements, questions, or adoption of this resolution. I guess we have two. One for the parking restriction on Broadway. And then two, the parking restriction at, on municipal lots. I will entertain a motion if there's no other questions from council.
There's no other discussion. I will make a motion on two of these things here. First, on parking restriction on Broadway. So I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution number 2025, a resolution of the American Canyon City Council restricting overnight parking on Broadway from 2801 Broadway to the southern city limits.
I'll second that.
Thank you. We have a second. Can we get a roll call, please? Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Lamatina?
Yes.
Councilmember Oro?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Joseph?
Yes.
Mayor Washington?
Yes. And thank you, Erica and Chief Greenberg, for your presentation.
There's one more motion.
One more to go.
Resolution. I'll make a, I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution number 2025. Next in order, a resolution of the American Canyon City Council restricting overnight parking in municipal lots.
And I'll second that, noting it's the revised version that we had on our dais.
Thank you. We have a second. Can we get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Lamatina?
Yes.
Councilmember Oro?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Joseph?
Yes.
Mayor Washington?
Yes. And again, thank you, Erica and Chief Greenberg. Next, we'll move on to our business item number 18, Business License Fee Program. Looks like it'll be Jim Cruz.
And I think Jim has, do you have a presentation, Jim, or no?
Yes.
Yeah, she does.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers, and members of the public. I'm Jim Cruz, City Finance Director. Today, we'll be providing an overview of the business license program with the focus on the nonprofit community events and mobile service vendors. So this presentation will cover first, a general overview of the business license program. Then we'll discuss how the program applies to nonprofit community special events. And we'll also review mobile, mobile service vendors, particularly food trucks. And then finally, we'll open the floor for discussion and seek council direction. This presentation was in response to council's request for more information, especially regarding special events like Meet Me in the Street, the Fourth of July, Magic of the Season, and Juneteenth. We'll also touch on how mobile vendors are regulated under the current code. The Business License Program was established in 1992. A business license ensures that businesses operate legally and safely within our community. The term business includes all types of gainful activities, whether or not they are for profit. According to our municipal code, it's unlawful to operate a business without a valid license. The program ensures compliance with state, county, and city regulations. These, for state, this is the seller's permit, the beverage license, state contractor, cosmetology, those type of state licensing. For the county, it includes health permits, weights and measures. And for the city, it's, it ensures compliance with our zoning requirements and the home occupation standards. It's important to note that our current code does not accept nonprofit or non-profitable activities, which came up during the recent nonprofit events. So here's a breakdown of our current fees. There is a $25 application fee, a $4 state mandated fee. And if they're a home-based business, they pay a $70 zoning clearance fee or home occupation. Or it's a zoning clearance fee if they are a commercial business and then a home occupation permit if it's a home-based business. And then we categorize businesses into three classes. Class A includes retail, manufacturing, and wholesale. B is restaurants, barbers, and hotels. And C is real estate, financial, and medical services. So in addition to those other fees, they would pay based on gross receipts, depending on the category. And then there are certain business types which play, which pay a flat fee. An example of that is the peddler solicitor fee, whose rate is at $200 per year. The peddler fee was set in 1992 to encourage brick-and-mortar establishments and level the playing field, as mobile service vendors typically have lower overhead costs. And there are exemptions to the licensing fee, but not from the processing fee. And exempt groups include charitable and nonprofit organizations, disabled veterans, low-income individuals on social security, and certain businesses exempt by state law. The $4 cast fee supports accessibility compliance and helps local jurisdictions hire certified access specialists, mostly having to do with ADA compliance. The $25 processing fee helps recover administrative costs. So next slide shows the revenue impact of our business license, which contributes about $265,000 to the general fund, which is less than 1% of the total. Of this, $225,000 comes from the license fees and $40,000. Of this, $225,000 comes from the license fees, and $40,000 is the processing fees. So this highlights that the program's primary purpose is regulatory, rather than the revenue-generating aspect. Okay, so currently, for the special events, the process is that each vendor at a nonprofit event obtain a separate license, which can be costly and time-consuming. This is especially burdensome for vendors participating in only one event. We have a proposal for a new process of one license obtained by the organizer, covering all the vendors and events, and the organizer would be responsible for ensuring compliance with health permits, seller's permits, and licenses. The city would continue to verify compliance through the special event permit process. To implement that type of proposed change, a modification to the municipal code would For mobile food vendors, so this is mobile food vendors or food trucks, they offer diverse food options, especially in areas with limited choices, like industrial zones. They're required to pay a business license and at the rate of the $200 peddler fee, in addition to the processing charges. And we'll also need to consider their operational requirements, like where and when they can operate, proper county health permits, and DMV insurance, or DMV, we also ask for like a DMV printout of each driver, and appropriate insurance. And as for the next steps, we're seeking council direction on whether changes should be made to the current fee structure or process. If council desires reduced fees for food trucks, a more comprehensive review, including input from interested parties such as restaurants and commercial shopping center owners, is So that concludes the presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions and look forward to your guidance on how we should move forward with these programs.
Thank you, Jim. I appreciate, it looks like we need to talk about, as a council, the modifying ordinances for the mobile streets, the special events, and if we want to move forward with reducing fees. So I would open it up to council if we have any clarifying questions. Councilmember Oro?
Actually, I don't have any clarifying questions, just have a comment. You know, I actually go through the business license process here in the city of American Canyon, myself. I've been doing that for, geez, I've been here the whole time, 25 years or so, 20 years of being a business owner in American. Mine is simple. I do the home-based business license, pay the fee, tell you the range of income I make, and I pay that fee. I think the big issue here is simplicity. And if you're looking for direction, I think we need to simplify what that process is. Because I don't, what I didn't see here was, you know, particularly food vendors have to do a county health fee, too, right? And so by the time they get to us, you know, they're crawling, like, please give me forgiveness. I just got beat up by the county on this, I had to do a health inspection for that. There's a lot going on there, and I just want to figure out a way to simplify it. And I think what we've heard is that it's complicated and also onerous versus nonprofit, versus being a peddler. I mean, when we wrote this in 1992, I joked earlier, I think, to us, they weren't food trucks. They were roach coaches back then. And nobody ate at a food truck, for the most part, unless you were on a construction site. And now it's like, probably some of the finest food you can find around, and food trucks are a different thing. They have a different model, and they have a different appreciation. And yet, we're treating them in what I think is also an antiquated term, a peddler, right? Outside of solar, there's rarely any door-to-door salesman anymore. There's no Encyclopedia Britannica, things like that. And I think we just need to modernize it and make it more simple. I don't, I read through this, I don't have the answers, but I think there's a couple of fees that could be fair to all. I do agree, though, that, you know, this should probably be also discussed with the broader business community, right? You know, when we first approved the first food truck here permanently, out in the parking lot right across the way here, you know, brick-and-mortar was upset. Maybe it was taking from them. We viewed it differently. It was like we were giving citizens choice, and let the best food place compete. And I still believe in that. But, you know, I think there should be some parity and some simplicity. That's all I got to say. And I would love for staff to come back with a way to simplify the whole thing.
Thank you, Councilmember Oro. Vice Mayor Joseph?
Yeah, I generally agree. I think the suggestion on the business license for nonprofits that are putting on events, it does make sense to have it restructured so that the nonprofit putting on the event gets the license and basically goes through the special permit process and, you know, and assumes some of the headache that's verified by the council or by the city. Because that same model could even apply to the insurance end of it. So I'm generally supportive of that special permit process, and if that requires a change to the business license ordinance, you know, so be it. So that part, I think, is a good common sense response. For the peddlers, yeah, I'd like to get input. I know the chamber has done an extensive amount of work with food trucks. The friend doors have left, but it would be neat if they were still here. Oh, okay, good. Because I'd like to get their feedback. And I kind of think that, you know, if the food trucks are there as part of kind of a nonprofit, Meet Me in the Street, we should treat them differently than if they're on the street looking to make some money and so forth. So for me, a lot of it is, as a nonprofit, we treat you one way. If you're out trying to make a buck, we treat you a different way. If that provides you with any guidance. And then the last thing that isn't even on the list is the home occupation permit. And that, I think, is just, if you don't know, you have to go through the process. It can be pretty expensive. And I don't know what the answer to that is either, except to some extent, since the new state requirement is reduced vehicle miles traveled, whatever we can do to encourage people working out of their house, arguably is part of a state purpose. Because if you're working out of your home, you're not going to some business and racking up the miles. So somehow, with home occupation permits, we may want to look at it from that perspective. Again, I think, I'm kind of like Councilmember Oro. I've got thoughts, I've got opinions, I've got concerns. I don't necessarily have answers, but we'll get the dialogue going.
I actually have a clarifying question first up. Jim, as it relates to the home occupation permit specifically, that amount, is that like an application fee, or is that more like the license fee, like for the home occupation?
It's a separate permit for, as part of the, like, planning review of the...
It's a one-time?
Yes.
Yeah, that's a, so it's a, the home occupation is a one-time, or a zoning clearance effectively in a residential neighborhood. It's not part of the annual part.
Okay. Then we'll just rely on people complaining that's just too much money, but that's a whole different dialogue. Thank you for that clarification.
Vice Mayor Joseph, I complain every year. Because, not that I don't want to give money to the city, I give time, you know. The reality is, you do it because it is a regulation, a law, an ordinance, right? And you do that, and it gives the city some funds. But for most small business owners, or particularly home-based businesses, they need that license to get a bank account. You cannot get a bank account unless you have that license. And unless you have a current license, you really can't do any more banking with that. And so that's what, that's how it helps the business owner, for most part.
I have a question for Councilmember Oro. We're going to, exhaustive questions. The renewal process that you're in, how long do you think that, when you renew each year? Like, hour, two hours? Like, how?
Oh, like 20, 30 minutes?
Okay.
If that, and that's just me complaining about paying it again. Five minutes of that, and trying to figure out, you know, to do this. It's online. You know, I get the reminders. If there's any feedback, you should probably send a couple more reminders. Because it's usually at the end of the year, and like, in the year you're closing books, you've got Christmas, you've got New Year's. And so I did miss, it was 10 months in before I realized that I didn't pay the year before. Yeah, and so I paid a penalty on that.
Sure.
By the way, because I thought I paid it. I did a reminder to myself, and then I skipped it and all that kind of stuff.
Maybe we can look at an ACH sort of linked bank auto-renewal thing.
Yeah, yeah. So it's okay, it's an okay process.
Thank you, thank you. Well, I agree with Councilmember Oro and Vice Mayor Joseph that simplify the process is important. And if we haven't visited it since 1992, I think it's time to revisit it. It would also help our commissioners in the planning commission. I know that there was some frustration that they expressed last year about making decisions thinking that that's what the council wants. And I think if we're clear that we're making those adjustments, the planning commission could make better decisions, knowing that we are open to, say, the food trucks. And also, the Chamber of Commerce would be able to have a little bit more understanding and not so much frustration. So with that said, I'd like to open it up to public comment for item number eighteen to address the Business License Fee Program.
Valerie Cizik-Mores?
Valerie Cizik-Mores, President/CEO of the American Canyon Chamber. I'm very excited to see this on the agenda tonight. There is a lot of backstory to where we got here today. As the Chamber of Commerce, we 100% support people having business licenses and operating legally within our community, and that's something that we believe is necessary. When it comes to Meet Me in the Street, that is a completely different entity, and as we are popping up close to 200 businesses on the street three times per summer, and one of the rules is to make sure that every single person out there has a business license if they're selling items, it becomes very cumbersome for not just myself, but for the city staff that has to issue all of those business licenses. And the $200 peddler's fee for food vendors that are only serving for nine hours within our community per year becomes costly up against the $600 county food permit that they have to obtain, along with $150 vendor fee that they have to pay per event to help the chamber pay the cost to put on Meet Me in the Street. So as we're watching this happen summer over summer, it is getting harder to recruit food vendors. Food costs are going up, and everybody's looking for a profit. And if there isn't a profit, we can't bring the vendors in. So this is something that I've had conversations with city staff, council members for months now, just really raising the awareness that it's not the $200 peddler's fee that we're worried about for people that are doing business daily here within our community. It's the $200 peddler's fee that the businesses have to obtain to do business nine hours a year within our community. So we're asking to be in support and in favor of the overall permit that the chamber would pay the fee for the permit to put an umbrella business license over top of the event, which allows us to track every vendor, share that list with the city. And it would be our responsibility, as the organizer of the event, to make sure that people are doing legal business, following rules, procedures, same as we do when we pull the Napa County Temporary Food Permit Organizer's permit, where we then gain responsibility on making sure that all of our food vendors are permitted and operating legally. So we are 100% in support of the nonprofit overall permit for the events. And at this point in time, we are not advocating against keeping the $200 peddler's permit for the vendors that are doing business daily within American Canyon, but maybe rewriting that ordinance to make a little more sense for the type of business that they are doing here. So thank you very much, and I appreciate the time to speak tonight.
Thank you, Valerie, our CEO of the Chamber of Commerce.
Are you ahead of me? I don't have a speaker's card. Okay, I didn't put in a speaker's card. I wasn't expecting to speak on this. I didn't even know it was on the agenda. But anyway, I'm a chamber member. I pay for my own individual membership to help with, you know, communications and nonprofits and things like that. And with Friends of the River, we used to put on the River Festival in Napa every year at downtown Napa. It was an all-day festival, it was fireworks, it was vendors, it was a lot of people. The symphony would play during the fireworks show. And that was a big deal. But when I found out that the city was charging us all their fees, you know, to put this on, it's like, why wouldn't the city help us to put on this? Because it's for city residents, it's, you know, for the river and all that. And so it always seemed a little weird to me that we didn't get help from the city to help us put it on. We had to pay everything like anybody else would. And the same, now that I'm treasurer for Friends, I write all the checks, I process all the checks for Earth Day in Napa, which is put on the Environmental Education Coalition of Napa County. And it's kind of the same thing, except City of Napa does send us a big donation, I think $1,000 in the county. And that, because of the cause, I guess, that event seems to raise a lot of money, which is great, because that's the purpose of it. So what I think about with Meet in the Streets, and I've helped volunteer out for that, to me, that's a service to the community. That's a service to the city that the Chamber of Commerce is doing for us. I mean, if you could, I can't imagine our Parks and Recreation Department having, trying to put on a thing like that with all the staffing that would be required. But I see citizens come, all my neighbors come out, and all the vendors and the nonprofits. I just think it's a service to the city that that's put on. And so for my part, I would like the city to help out with that process anyway. Instead of ever trying to, oh, good, well, we can get some money from them here, and we can get some money from them here, and, you know, for the city revenues. I would almost go the other way, that you give them some money and help them anyway. And I think you probably are. It's a very successful event, a fun event. But I think it's a service to the city and the community, and so that anything you could do to help them, to me, would make sense. Thank you.
Thank you. And for the record, that was Barry Christian from American Canyon. We have viewers that may not know who you are, though.
Joan Bennett. I'm, on Meet Me in the Street, the Friends of the Library wanted to sell some of their, I think, I don't remember their, not necessarily their books, but, you know, other things, tapes and stuff like that. And they were told they had to have a city business license. Well, they are a nonprofit, but the money that they raise supports the library. They don't get anything from it personally. It all supports the library. So I know Shonda Newmeyer, who is the chair of the, excuse me, Friends of the Library, she tried to do the paperwork that needed to be done to maybe have an exemption, and it was so complicated that she threw up her hands and said, "We're not selling anything, we're just going to give books away." So that's what they did at Meet Me in the Street. I don't know if this kind of thing is addressed in the presentation, but, you know, there should not be a business license needed for some nonprofit that's doing something for the community. They're not getting anything personally. It's not like they're, you know, getting any money. It's all going to support the library, and the library supports the community. So could you clarify for me whether they still need to get a business license if they're Meet Me in the Street?
I'm happy to clarify that. The rules from 1992, as strange as they may seem, would require anyone who's selling things, regardless of whether they are a profit or not, to get a license. And that's what we're proposing to modernize and to address. So particularly for a new event like maybe in the street, it's been going on for a couple of years, but pretty relatively new as a, you know, as a kind of event in the community where we're bringing in vendors and we're bringing in outside interest in a way that didn't exist before, having some flexibility to have them come under here and not be a burden is what we're trying to do. So, you know, it would be pretty simple to bring back, change to the municipal code that will address this kind of umbrella concept with nonprofits who are throwing events. We're actually looking at not even requiring a special business license for that event. We would just do it under the existing license of the nonprofit, which the chamber has and other nonprofits have. So we would just say, you're allowed, under that existing business license, to have events. You don't need a special license for that event. You're still required to make sure things go well, and everyone else does their thing. But part of the purpose of the Business License Program is this sort of zoning clearance con- concept, right? If you apply for a business license from us to open up an auto repair shop over on Via Bellagio where you live, we're going to say no because that's not allowed, even though you may be good at it and you want to do it as a small business. That sort of thing's not allowed in a neighborhood. That's what we use the process for. But in the case of a special event, we've already sort of gone through that process. We want the event, it's cool, there's not any sort of, whatever neighborhood issues might be have already been addressed in a separate process and are being dealt with. So we don't need the zoning clearance side of things, so we're looking to streamline that as much as we can.
Thank you, Mr. Holly, and thank you, Joan, for that comment.
I also wanted to, like, mention that nonprofits don't have to pay the fee. There's no business license fee, but we do require them to have a license. It's just that the fees are, there's no fees with nonprofits. And so, yeah, there's still the application, and then the proof of 501(c)(3), and then that'll exempt nonprofits from having to pay the license fee.
Thank you, Joan. Any other public comment?
I do have a hand raised online. Let me take a look. Farrah, go ahead.
Hi, this is Farrah from Front Doors. I just wanted to share about the food truck community. As you know, there are a few food trucks that are local here to American Canyon, and we do try to work with them for a lot of our American Canyon events. In regards to food trucks for the City of American Canyon, I know that, you know, we pay a peddler's fee, which, you know, many of our food trucks are not even allowed to pedal or to be a peddler in American Canyon. We've tried a number of times to talk to a few people in regards to having food trucks at events. We did have one at the gas station at one point, and then, you know, I think, I forgot what happened, but I believe like we, they had to get an event permit for that, things like that. So we just kind of have not been able to bring in food trucks to the community, even though a lot of the community members, they say, "Hey, you should park here, you should park there." And we tell them that we cannot park in these areas. So that's kind of like the first thing in regards to like charging a $200 peddler's fee. I know in Napa, if you have a peddler's permit, you actually get a, like a card that says peddler's permit, and you have to work with the police department to get that card. There's a number of things that you have to do just to get a peddler's permit for the City of Napa. A lot of food trucks park on saucepools, so a lot of those food trucks actually have permits to be able to park there and in certain areas in the City of Napa. And then in regards to the events, having to bring in vendors, as you know, we're having Manila Munchies in October. Last year, our event was held on private property, but this year, it being held on public property, we will end up having to get business license for all these vendors, in which a number of these vendors that I know have already, you know, expressed their concerns that if they had to pay for a business license and they're coming to our event just one time. We have a vendor, we have vendors as far as Fresno that comes in. So a number of those vendors, you know, are kind of hesitant in applying or being part of our event just because them having to pay for all of these fees, it's just not worth it to them for one day. So that, and then in regards to all these fees, I know they're all due in January, in which January is the slowest month for food trucks, food vendors. And so we have to pay all of our renewals for all of our counties. So, you know, for TJ's, we pay for Solano County, Napa County, and then I, you know, it's so much money that we just don't opt to paying for other counties. And then we have to pay for our Chamber of Commerce fees, we have to, so a lot of fees come out in January, and that's the month that a lot of vendors just, they just, there's no events that happen. And so for them to have to pay for the business license renewal in January, having to pay for the renewals for their permits, having to pay for upcoming events, because that's when it all starts, you know, they ask you for payments, and it all starts in January. So it's a lot of funds that come out of a small business at a time that we don't have the funds to be able to pay for it.
Farrah, you're at time.
Oh, sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you, Farrah.
I have no other hands raised.
No other hands raised. I'll close public comment for item number 18, return to council. I know that we don't have an ordinance or a resolution that we need to vote on tonight, but I guess you're looking for a straw vote or some type of direction from us?
Maybe I'll just sort of summarize what I'm hearing. Correct me if I'm wrong, what I'm hearing is pretty broad support for this concept of a streamlined approach on special events and having this umbrella where our nonprofits can invite these folks in and not have to go with these individual licenses. I'm also hearing some support for bringing back a conversation with all the stakeholders for food trucks generally, the other 360 days a year, and including restaurants, including shopping center owners, and having that broader conversation about, you know, what we want that to look like, and probably having some more information about what that whole program looks like, what do the county fees look like, what are some of the other soft costs involved with organizations like the Chamber or whatever, you know, just particularly, you know, cash flow issues in January, for example. So that would be a bigger conversation, kind of separate, and happen at a later date. But that's kind of what I'm hearing. Correct me if I'm wrong, but if you want something else.
Vice Mayor Joseph?
No, I think that's a good summary. The only other thing, and it's more picky unish, the peddler fee name probably ought, you know, if we can, if we're going to amend the business license about the special permit for nonprofits, maybe rename that to like a food truck fee or something.
We can work on those semantics, too.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
Any other questions for council? Well, with that, I'm taking it that you have a...
We have what we need, Mayor, thank you.
Okay, good. Thank you, thank you, Joan. Let's move on to our final business item, number 19, Legal Services Agreement. Mr. Holly?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. We're waiting for someone to join us on the screen there. The item tonight is the final step in a process that the City Council has been underway for a couple of months now. Under the assistance of retired City Manager Jim Schutz, JMB Strategies, the Council issued a request for proposals for legal services. On April 4th, there were nine firms that submitted proposals by the May 9th deadline. On May 20th, the Council reviewed the proposals, and on June 9th, the Council interviewed five of the firms. After June 9th, the Council determined the firm of Coonton Highsmith and Watley is most qualified to provide legal services to the city, and specifically appointing Teresa Highsmith as certi-attorney. Teresa's there up on the screen. The staff report contains information about the qualifications of this firm, and next steps to move forward would be approval of the agreement, which shows up as attachment to in the packet. So if there are additional questions, I'm happy to answer those. I know Terry, as she goes by, also has some thoughts to share with the council when you're ready for that.
Thank you, Mr. Holly. I'll open it up to council for any clarifying questions, if any. Seeing none, I'd like to offer you an opportunity to introduce yourself, Teresa High, Ms. Teresa Highsmith, if you'd like to make a comment to us and the community.
Thanks so much, Mayor Washington, members of the City Council, and also city staff. I really appreciate the opportunity tonight that you're letting me appear virtually just to introduce myself. But I am looking forward to seeing you all in person. My firm and I are really honored to have been chosen by the City Council for the City of American Canyon as your next contract city attorney. Our firm, Colin To诺, Highsmith and Watley, has been in the business of providing legal services to cities throughout the state of California since 2002. And we're really excited to begin working directly with the council and with your staff to provide the full spectrum of legal support for the City of American Canyon. And thanks very much. If you have any questions for me this evening, I'll try to answer them.
Thank you, Teresa. Any questions from council? Seeing none, I'd like to open it up to public comment for item number 19. Any questions that anyone in the room or online may have for our new city attorney?
I have Joan Bennett.
Actually, I'm sorry that Bill just left the room. There is change that happens in every organization, every entity, every home, so on and so forth. So this council has decided to make a change in the city attorney. And I'm not going to comment on that, actually. What I want to comment on is how valuable Bill Ross has been to this city for so many years. And I don't want him to leave without knowing that there are people that want to speak up in his behalf to thank him for what he has done and how he has led this city for so long. Of course, I was on the first city council, so I've had a long relationship with Bill Ross, and I've always known him to be an upstanding guy, very straightforward and honest and has integrity and so on and so forth. So I'm just here to say goodbye to Bill and his present, I guess, retire, I don't know if you call it retirement, or, no, it's not retirement, it's change. So anyway, that's why I'm here, and I just want to let the City Council know that even though you have decided to make a change, you are going to be not, you're not going to be without the institutional knowledge that this man has, unless you call upon him, which being the stand-up guy he is, he probably will answer anything you question him about. But anyway, I'm sorry he's not in the room, but I, you know, I for one really want to thank him for everything he's done in the 30 years or so that he's been here city attorney. Thank you.
Thank you, Joan. Appreciate those comments.
I have Robert Raven. I don't see him in the room.
Doesn't appear to be in a room.
And I have no other hands raised online.
I'm assuming Mr. Ken Leary is coming up after... Identify yourself, mister. Right on. I share very similar sentiments. I really appreciate all the work that Bill Ross has done for the city for many years, his integrity, his depth of knowledge. I don't know if I'm breaking any rule by saying, you know, we had issues to deal with. He went through 36 file boxes of information to help us out, understand a matter better. That's the depth of commitment he has to American Canyon. For, and I'm assuming this point would go through, for our attorney, Teresa Highsmith, I would ask that you really spent a lot of time getting to know American Canyon or community, the values that are here. We are an extremely diverse city. School surveys some years ago found there were 38 different languages spoken at home. That's how diverse the city is. And culture impacts our decisions and how we relate to each other, and as a community, how we relate to a community. So I would like to hear more from you. Whoop, you're gone, sorry. She's still there. Maybe she got timed out. She's still there, she's still there. I hope I didn't scare you off. But yeah, it's, the service from a city attorney is essential and very valued, and valuable and valued by the community of American Canyon. And anyone wanting to fill in the issues of Bill Ross certainly is a challenge, but I would certainly give credit to council for an extensive search and their decision in terms of wanting to make this change. You know, I'm not in agreement with it, but life goes on, and we will certainly look forward to their contribution to that discussion. Thank you. Thank you, Leon.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Kenneth Leary, City of American Canyon. Gosh, yeah, change happens. This bill has been with the city since its incorporation and has supported the city and city councils all of that time. I know as being a former city council member and a department head for a city that we all serve, actually as hired guns, come and go, depends on the needs of the city. With any new employee or new city manager, new law firm, it's up to the city council to set the policies in the direction. In my years of working for a number of cities in the federal government, I find when policymakers are not able to come to a consensus or feel that they need to be the ones to run the show because they know better, that no city manager, no city attorney can satisfy all of these members. So with any new city attorney, council members need to be able to come together one direction because when the directions and voices are different, then people under you don't know how to serve and who to serve. So I always bring the responsibility back to the policymakers and the council members. It is your responsibility to make sure the people who are here to serve you and the city are following our policies and direction. But you must come together and agree, and that's the difficult part of politics. Sometimes you have to give up your ego. So Bill has always been forthright. One of the most important things he's said to me, and I always think about that in development, that know what you want and ask for it. And if you don't know what you want and you don't ask for it from the developers, they're not going to give it to you. And I've worked with a number of developers, and to say that, well, let's just leave it at that. Know what you want, ask for it, and do it together. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. Fran?
Fran Lemus. I've known Bill since I was on the Fire Commission, and he was our attorney. So he's been here for many, many, many years. He was excellent then, and I think he was excellent on our city council. So I'm really proud to have known Bill and respect him, and I wish him well on his retirement. It's fun to be retired. So good luck to Bill and good luck to our new attorney. I'm sure that she's going to find American Canyon a wonderful place to work because we love it, we love the community. So welcome aboard and goodbye, Bill. Thank you.
Thank you, Fran. No other comments? I'm going to close public comment, but I want to clarify one thing. Bill's not completely gone, he's not completely retired. He's still our attorney for the Fire District. So he's still, he's still part of our family. But I want to say, I'm sure he walked out because he knew that there were going to be some public comments. And he's a man that I say is very professional, he has a lot of integrity, and he has a lot of deep commitment to our community. And his work here will not be forgotten. And on behalf of the City Council and our entire city, I want to thank Bill personally for what he has done. He has been the only attorney we've ever had here, and he has been also a friend. And he has been also a friend. He called me a lot of late nights, and we didn't always agree on things, but he was always professional, and we agreed to be able to disagree. He will be missed as our city attorney, but I would like to take this opportunity to welcome Terry as our new city attorney. I think you, Terry, beat out a lot of competition out there, and I'm just glad that you're a part of our, are going to be part of our team when we make the motion here to accept you as our new city attorney. I'd like to give an opportunity for the rest of my colleagues to share their thoughts about Bill as well. I'm sure he'll have an opportunity to look at the video, and he could hear it, but I know he didn't want to be emotional in front of anybody here today. I'll start with Vice Mayor.
I haven't known him as long as Fran or some of the others, but obviously, I've worked with Bill as a city manager, as a finance director, then as a councilperson, and off and on as just a regular citizen. Yes, Bill has a lot of institutional history, a lot of integrity. Frankly, told some of the best jokes, but that's besides the point. He will be missed, but I am looking forward to Terry taking over that new role. I think as the city matures and grows, we need to look for law firms that have a little more depth, that do spend time working for municipal cities, because I think that's the kind of expertise we need going forward. And so I think CHW, because I can't pronounce all the names, CHW, I think, is that firm. And I think they will help us out in a lot of ways, and I think we're going to learn to enjoy Terry Highsmith as well as the others just as much as we've enjoyed Bill. And I think this is all part of an effort to continue pushing the city forward. So I'm looking forward to Terry's arrival, and I, there's a, there's a part of me that's sad about Bill leaving, but I think it's all for the best.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Oral?
Bill was the first to sit down with me as a new council member, and I think he does that with all new council members. And he acts as a, he acted as a sounding board, as a mentor, and advisor, and as a counselor. What a genuine human being. Absolutely loved Bill. You know, and I think cities evolved. When I joined this council, this council evolved. And, you know, as the second senior-most person here, it's evolved again. And, you know, it just speaks to, a testament to Bill's work ethic and what he does to have lasted as long as he has with this, with this evolving council and city managers and folks. So I want to wish him the best, you know, love him to death. Great to have conversations with him. If we can ever get talking about legal issues, outside of legal issues, there's so much more to him. And, but he loves the law. He really, really loves the intellectual challenge of being a lawyer, particularly in the state of California. Him and I have, he, he has other clients in far-reaching places, in remote counties, Siskiyou, Inyo, places that most Californians don't go to. But I happen to go to them, and so we share the love for talking about far-flung places in California. So I appreciate that. Yeah, just, we're moving forward here on this, and I think Terry and her team presented in a way that is getting us to a decision tonight. So I'm looking forward to welcoming her while I'm also wishing Bill the best. And I'm glad he's still gonna be around with us, but not in this capacity. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Oral. Councilmember Lamatina?
Thank you. Although I'm new to council and I haven't got to spend much time with Bill, my first impression was that I felt very comfortable around him, like I could ask him pretty much anything. He's very knowledgeable, and I know he'll be sorely missed in this capacity, like Councilmember Oral stated, but he's not going far. And I'd just like to say thank you to Mr. Ross for being an amazing attorney for all these years.
Thank you, Councilmember Lamatina. And Teresa, I'd like to offer you a little closing remark, opportunity, if you have one.
Well, thank you so much. I, I have met with Bill a couple of times during the, you know, up to this evening. And my, one of my business partners, Michael Collington, who's the founding member of this firm, does actually know Bill. And I have found Bill to be an excellent attorney, very forthcoming, only wants to help the city. And I will, of course, be relying upon him for that institutional knowledge during this transition. So, I wouldn't look to say that Bill is being pushed out in any way. It's more of a team approach, and I very much appreciate the institutional knowledge that is there. One of the commenters said, please take the time to get to know American Canyon, its unique culture. I couldn't agree more, although I promise never to interfere in policy decisions. That is not an attorney's role. But I will absolutely rely on Bill Ross to get me up to speed on some of the institutional knowledge that is very necessary to kind of hit the ground running for the city. So, thank you all for this.
Thank you, Teresa. And with that said, I'd like to return to the council and ask the council for a motion on this minute order to appointing Teresa Highsmith as our new city attorney.
If no one else has anything to add, I'll make the motion that we adopt a minute order, one, approving a legal services agreement with Coolentwano, Highsmith &amp; Watley, PC, and secondly, appointing Terry, Teresa Highsmith, as city attorney.
I'll second. And I thought you said you couldn't pronounce all the names.
I don't know if I pronounced it correctly or not, but I just...
Thank you. Well, we have a second. Can we get a roll call, please, Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Lamatina?
Yes.
Councilmember Oral?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Joseph?
Yes.
Mayor Washington?
Yes.
So congratulations, Teresa, and welcome aboard. Glad to have you. Looking forward to meeting with you on Friday. So with that, we'll move on to the management and staff oral reports. Mr. Hawley?
Yes, Mayor. Wanted to check in with the council. We're approaching ten o'clock. We have both the update from Public Works. We also have update from ALA around community events and parking wreck. If you want to have those updates, we can. If you're tired and want to go to the home, we can do that, too. Just checking in. We're ready if you are.
Do you think they can be done within fifteen minutes?
They, they can be done in however fast you tell them to be done.
I mean, I'm sure they've prepared something. I'd like to have them go ahead and do their thing. Okay. If the council doesn't have a problem with that, I'd like to move forward with it.
All right. We're good to go. You guys know your deadlines.
I think she might have a presentation.
Good evening. Do you want a presentation, or do you just want the verbiage that I provided?
High level we do for tonight.
We've completed a lot the last quarter of the city, the last fiscal year. I think everyone, if you haven't driven around and you haven't been anywhere, then we're under construction. Have you not noticed? I wanted to put up my favorite one, but it's not inappropriate. It's a little inappropriate. But it's, there's a lot of work going on around the city. So, and we're not alone. Caltrans, I keep getting calls from all kinds of neighbors and family asking me, what the heck is Caltrans doing? I've never seen this much construction going on, but I'm rambling at this point. But Knightsbridge, anything but done, it's about done. We got, in the last ninety days, it's pretty much completed. We're finalizing the punch list items. Rancho Del Mar, substantial completion on that as well. We're working out the final pavement disconstruction. We had PGE go out there and lower their lines, so we can do the full-depth reclamation and do a more substantial pavement overlay reconstruction on Rio Del Mar. Melvin, if you haven't been down that road, we need to have sidewalks and storm drains going in. Still underway, and then completed projects, Wetlands Edge Enhancement Project. They poured the slab for the new structure today. So, we're still waiting on the, the structure to be in here by September and the bathroom by October, but work is progressing out there. Cartagena Manhole Rehab, we heard a lot of complaints from residents living on that area. City staff completed that work in the last ninety days, actually right before June thirtieth. We got it repaved, and, or not repaved, but the manholes lowered and the sections around it paved. Main Street Park Electrical got done right before the Juneteenth event. And the City Hall EV charging stations were also completed and invoiced, or not invoiced yet. Got to do the final invoice for the grant. That was all hundred percent grant. The, I'm not going to read all of this off, but those are the biggest highlights, I think, in the last quarter. We've advertised and awarded quite a bit of construction projects. To continue, the Green Island Road being the biggest item. They're not going to probably start until August, but we had a preinitial, pre-con with them two weeks ago. And I just got an email, I noticed, from Valerie on when the grid meeting should be up to update all the business owners, businesses along that stretch of the Green Island Road District. The North Hampton Park restroom and Silver Oak Restrooms are waiting on delivery. Those purchases were made. The good news is the shade structure should be here soon for North Hampton Park, so we'll have shade finally over the picnic tables that have been out there for quite a bit. We got Calp, we got PGE to agree to a shade structure out there, but it's gonna be the shade sail style, not a fixed structure. So, the next goals for the next ninety days, complete Rancho Del Mar, substantial completion, Melvin Sidewalk substantial completion, Wetlands Edge substantial completion, Green Island Road begin construction, North Hampton Shade Structure begin complete construction, and the City Hall Roof replacement be underway. And we'll finally have some long-needed SCADA, SCADA's Automation Controls, upgrades at the wastewater, or water reclamation facility with the water treatment plant closely behind, as far as awarding the contract. And then we hopefully be out to advertise on the American Canyon East, American Canyon Road East Guardrail Project, which is grant-funded, and awarding the SCADA upgrades at the water treatment plant. The, and out to bid finally on the Green Island Road Class One Trail. The, we're finally in the final stretch with our Caltrans approving the grant funding obligation, so we can go out to advertisement. And we also submitted a grant application the last two weeks as for the Grant Match, which was the MVTA will be going, hopefully, approved or awarded by TAC. I don't know who else submitted. It's a competitive grant round, but for our local match. And I'll stop there. You have the overall schedule for the next ninety days, as well as the map of all the projects for this fiscal year. And then I can quickly run through some photos, unless you're done. You want some photos?
No, I do have a question by Councilmember Oral.
Okay.
Did you identify the issue on Cartagena? The Cartagena pothole and the undulations that were happening over there in the Montevino area?
Yes.
Yeah, I know you fixed it. What was the issue, is what I was asking. Was it, because I had heard it was a natural spring, or?
There's, there... Miller Pacific, which is one of our geotechnical, has been going out there for the last eight years to check on it. The belief there is it's just settling, settling into the soil. As a newcomer, knowing there's a natural spring coming out in the watershed there, there's, you know, is there watershed? But the laterals, the main trunk lines have not changed. Nothing else has changed out there except for the settling along that stretch, along the surface. So I'd have to rely on what the geotech is telling us that it's just settling.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Vice Mayor?
Paving on, in the Rancho, is that scheduled yet? Or is it coming soon? As much as I'm excited about it, after about three months of driving on funky roads, it's...
Yes.
Okay. Soon? Or you haven't got a date yet?
I, I don't want to give out dates, but I mean, you know, it will be done by August.
Okay.
End of August. That's the goal.
All right. Thanks. Thanks, Vice Mayor. And you have some pictures you want to show?
If you'd like to see them, I could give you some pictures. They were included in the staff report.
We took the time to put them in there. Let me look at them.
So, here's Knightsbridge, the before and after. Looking good. I also met with a resident out there that had concerns about some punch lists, and we had a great conversation. Here's just more work while it was going underway. As for those who don't know, it included full water main replacements and services to the residents. Rancho Del Mar, it's ongoing. You know, before I left, I went on vacation for a week. They were doing the sewer lining, water main improvements, curb ramp upgrades. And also PGE was doing weekend work, so we had staff out there inspecting that work, because they had to lower, because their lines are very shallow, we found out during construction. And then here's more, some of the upgrades. I believe that looks like Melvin Road or James Road to the left, or am I wrong? Maybe I'm not. No, that's Rancho Del Mar. And then here's Melvin Sidewalk going in. They took forever to start, but then they were pouring and forming right away. And then here's Wetlands. I got to Wetlands. I haven't been out there yet. I just returned from vacation this morning, so it's looking good out there, seeing the pavement. And then, since this was published a week ago, they were literally pouring concrete yesterday out there for the concrete structure, so today. You saw it today? Okay, all right. I saw a text. I wasn't sure what was from yesterday or from this morning. So, and that's it. That concludes my little pastored PowerPoint.
Thank you for the visuals. Thank you, Erica.
It's a team, it's, it's, yeah, it's, there's a lot going on by the entire department, so. And a lot of collaboration across all the divisions, so.
A lot of work going on. Good work. Thank you, Erica. ALA?
I'm not as tall. I'm here to tell you all the wonderful things that are happening here in American Canyon in the next couple of weeks. First and foremost, we have hydrant flushing and valve exercising at 260 American Canyon Mobile Home Park, happening this entire week, ending and finishing up hopefully by Friday. Starting on July seventeenth, we have adult game night at the Adult Activity Center from seven to nine. On July eighteenth, we have a teen swim night at the Philip West Aquatic Center from six to nine PM. On July twenty-second, we, Spirit Horse is hosting a summer camp throughout that entire week, and it is designed for children seven years and up. Also that evening, we have the American Canyon Fire Protection District Board Meeting at six thirty PM. On July twenty-sixth, there is a blood drive from ten AM to two PM at the American Canyon Community Church. On July twenty-ninth, there is a pizza and painting in Shenandoah Park from eleven AM to two PM. And then there is also a special council meeting scheduled for that evening at six thirty. On August first, there is a free swim day at the Philip West Aquatic Center from one thirty to four. This is brought to us by Napa County Supervisor Belia Ramos. On August second, we have a free paper shredding event from nine AM to twelve PM here at City Hall. And then on August fifth, if you have not marked your calendars, it's National Night Out. We are encouraging and looking for block parties, so please take the time to register. We want it to be a successful event and a great party for our community. And then lastly, if you have not heard, The Wall at Heels is coming to American Canyon. That event is going to take place from October sixteenth through the nineteenth. We are looking for volunteers, starting as early as October fifteenth. There is some fiscal labor that is involved, but then we also have various other volunteer opportunities that are, that don't require fiscal labor. So if you are interested and you want to volunteer, please visit our website. Or if you need assistance with registering, you can contact the Parks and Recreation Office. We'll be more than happy to assist you with that registration. But we are looking for volunteers. This is going to be a regional event. We are the only location in Northern California, so we need all hands on deck. It's a great way to celebrate and highlight American Canyon the best way that we can. Thank you.
Thank you, ALA. And thank you, Mr. Hawley and staff, for those reports. Moving on to city council and mayor comments and committee reports, starting with Vice Mayor.
I finally got my report in, so I need to say no more, especially if it's ten o'clock.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. Councilmember David Oral? I'm gonna have an Uber report pretty soon, so. It's gonna be a pretty long report. Councilmember Lamatina?
I just attended the Climate Commission with Vice Mayor, what's your name down there? Joseph? And I just really want to encourage our community to cut back on the plastics and just... And I just really want to encourage our community to cut back on the plastics and just try to help climate change. Thank you.
Thank you. And my report's on file. You can read, they got some pictures and things, events that I attended this last cycle. Any future agenda items to report? Seeing none, and with three minutes to spare, we have concluded our business for this evening. We are adjourned. Good night, American Canyon.